Certainly want to begin by expressing our appreciation for your time. I know this is a grueling couple of days and a lot of information overload that leads to a lot of difficult decisions. So certainly appreciate all of your time and your dedication to get through this process. So I know we're right after lunch. Hopefully you had nothing too heavy and didn't have car blowed up and get sleepy as we go through this next three hours of presentation of the fire department budget.
Three hours of which you have won.
Ish. We will try to expedite this as much as possible so that we can keep you moving. Myself and staff are here to humbly submit the fire department's 2022 operational budget. And our budget begins on page 146 of your notebooks, but we've also provided you with some supplemental handouts that will hit the tip of the waves and keep you from having to hopefully flip through the notebook pages as much. So to begin, I'd like to touch on our key performance indicators, especially a few of them of note that they're in your budget book, but just want to give you some updates and you'll use some of these will be an anchor point for discussions this afternoon. So the first graph that you see is the our call volume. In our, you can compare 2020 versus 2021. What this graph depicts is through August. At that point, we had almost a 6% increase in our call volume from year to year. We just ran over the weekend our September numbers and right now the fire department is sitting at a 7%, 7.7% increase in call volume. So number of factors that likely contribute to that, but you know, the outcome is the fire department increasingly gets busier every year and responding to more and more incidents, particularly comparative to the year before. The next page is our performance indicator on our response time. So what this captures is when someone calls 911 and the call type necessitates lights and sirens or an emergent response. So it fires, heart attacks, severe car wrecks, things like that. We established a KPI of that we want our response time to be less than six minutes 90% of the time. Right now, we're have made some improvements and we're hovering around that 81 percentile, but certainly not where we want to be. And I'll speak specifically to some strategies about how we can address that. Our main focus is when somebody's having an emergency, we want to put a fire apparatus, our personnel on scene as quickly as possible to mitigate that emergency. The longer the person is not breathing, the longer the person's heart is not beating, the longer the house is on fire, it compounds the severity of that and leads to more negative outcomes. So we need to be able to place our apparatus, our personnel on scene rapidly so that we can make those emergency interventions. Then the next page talks about our availability of our emergency vehicles. We've seen significant improvement over the last few years with that. I know the city manager referenced it in the transmittal letter. Heard Public Works Director Robbie talk about us moving our mechanic services to the central garage. We've had incredible outcomes with that, but you know, what we've noticed is that as our fleet expands, as our fleet gets older, the cost of labor, the cost of materials, repair parts goes up, that we needed to make an adjustment to our base budget. And as City Manager Roloff indicated in the transmittal letter that you all received, we were able to successfully do that. So we're going to be able to continue to maintain this availability of the apparatus and to hopefully improve this metric as well by keeping our frontline fire trucks, our ambulances in service and that they're not broken down in the shops and have this compounding effect if we don't have the apparatus and fleet that we need. The next chart references our ambulance utilization. So that's how often is our frontline ambulances, are they out on a, they're out on an emergency response already. And that's 24%, that's the upper limit. If you get over 24% unit hour utilization, the ambulance is too busy or all three of our ambulances are too busy. So we continue to creep upwards. That's again illustrated by the increase in our call volume year to year, anticipating next year we will continue to increase, but we're not at that threshold yet. This further demonstrates that council in the city made a good decision by discontinuing the emergency or the non-emergency interfacility transfers because that would have pushed us well above that unit hour utilization rate. So that was a sagacious move of taking that service and discontinuing it so that we could keep our emergency response ambulances in service so that they can respond to medical emergencies in our community. The last thing that I'd like to point out on our KPIs and I'll reference this again later, our personnel complete a tremendous amount of training and that there's many different requirements around training for firefighting, for aircraft rescue firefighting, emergency medical service. So they complete thousands of hours of training every year. So that training has to be developed, administered, logged, recorded, and we do, our folks do a great job of making sure that they're well trained to be able to respond to any type of emergency in the community and mitigate that emergency successfully and safely. Moving on to the 2021 slide, just like to talk about some of the accomplishments that we've been able to achieve this year. One of the things we're most proud of is we had our review for the insurance service organization rating where they look at what is our ability as a fire department and as a community to include water, fire hydrants, dispatching, what's our capacity to provide fire protection to our community? Historically, we'd been a two of 10. For the first time in our history last year, we received a rating of one to 10, one out of 10. So that is the highest level of classification that they issue. Puts us at the forefront of fire departments across the country. There's less than 400 fire departments nationally that have achieved that rating. And there's only a small handful in the state of Wisconsin that have achieved that rating. So we're very proud of the fact that we offer the premier services to our community and to those in need for fire protection. And that's a hard level to attain that organizationally, we put a lot of effort and work into that. A lot of that was through the supportive council of the purchase of the training tower and some other staffing improvements we were able to implement to help us get to that level. Now that's a five-year rating, but they audit us every year. So now we've maintained it, we can't rest on our laurels, we've earned it, we can't rest on our laurels, we have to maintain that because we do not want to take a step backwards in the level of service that we provide. This year, the fire department also received a leadership safety award from the Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Association recognizing the things that we've done to protect our firefighters and protect our community. So we're very, very proud to receive that, that we were recognized of that we put a tremendous amount of effort into keeping our personnel safe and protecting our investment. And then you see the icon or the logo from the Wisconsin State Fire Inspector Association that in next week, our fire inspector, our lieutenant of fire inspection will be receiving an award for being selected as the state fire inspector of the year. So it's very humbling, but also something to be very proud of that our department represents our city is seen across many capacities as a leader in what we're able to achieve. But what drives us the most is we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community. So you all received an invitation for November to participate in our strategic planning session. And that will be to supplement and integrate with the city's strategic planning and it will take input from our community stakeholders of what is the expectations of the community? What are the risks that are associated with our community of how do we today and moving forward into the future continue to evolve, grow, and meet the changing needs of those we serve? And then we've contracted with Short Elliott Hendrickson to do the space utilization study that council directed. So that study has begun and they are currently evaluating our current infrastructure, our current facilities, mechanicals, things of that nature to identify what we have and then make suggestions for where we need to go into the future. And we anticipate completion of that in January, February of 2022. And excited to see the results of that, be able to have them share those results with you all to look at what do we need to do with facilities? And I know that's a constant refrain throughout the city that we've got aging infrastructure, aging facilities, what do we need to do to improve? So we're taking a very deep dive to look into that. Moving on into the 2022 goals, that's you've seen these in your budget book, but you want to just highlight a few of them. We want to create an assistant chief of support services position. We want to further implement an inventory control and management system so that we can be efficient with our resources, look for cost savings. We want to implement automatic vehicle location dispatching, which I'll speak to here momentarily. We need to revise and update our policies and procedures and purchase a document management system. And our last goal is explore how shared services with other fire departments could improve efficiency. Could we share resources? Could we have joint buying power to save money for our city and other municipalities as well? So we'll be taking a look at things like that. In 2019, Matrix Consulting completed a staffing and deployment study for us and that was secondary to the direction of council and them council having the city contract for that to be done. So I won't go through all these subsequent pages, you can do that to cure your insomnia later this evening, but just want to give you that resource of, we took their recommendations and put them into a crosswalk. This is updated, you've probably seen this crosswalk previously to this, but we're very pleased that we've been able to implement the majority of those things, recommendations that came out of the staffing study with the supportive council for additional staffing, technology, some organizational restructuring. We've been able to implement these things. And would like to point out that we feel like we've been very good stewards to this staffing study and to the finances of making these things happen. So the majority of the issues are completed. There are some that are not and are not in progress because we're not at benchmarks yet. They indicated some benchmarks for when would we need a second fire inspector? If we had so many, a threshold of so many inspections a year, we're not there yet. They recommended a threshold for when you have this many occupancies and businesses, this much development in an area and you have this much call volume in an area, perhaps you would need a new station. We're not there yet. So there's only a couple of things dangling that we have not been able to achieve and I'll speak to those in the enhancements right now. So flipping past the matrix studies, you see the frayed rope and that was a deliberate and conscious decision to use that picture because really we feel like the rope is fraying in the middle and is under a lot of stress. One of the things that the staffing study called for in 2019 was the recommendation to add another assistant chief position as assistant chief of support services. That was based on our needs in 2019. Here we are entering 2022, that need has not diminished and in fact it's increased. So that's our first budget enhancement. You'll see that's budget enhancement number nine, that we would add an FTE for that assistant chief of support services. I think this is a crucial position for our organization. I already noted the increase in call volume. Not inclusive of that increase in call volume is the increase in other duties as well. That as we have more growth and development in the community, the number of building inspections will go up and the number of permits that are required around the building process will go up. The population increases, we're going to have more need for public education. So all that support mechanism for the fire department is going to continue to increase. And you see in the following page, an organizational chart for the fire department. While at first glance, you might think we're pretty resource rich, but we are very much understaffed in our administrative positions. These last several years, since the staffing deployment has been done, we've worked to increase the number of line positions, people that are out there in the firehouses responding to the calls, but now we need to be attentive to the need for administrative support. We are severely overwhelmed administratively. As you can probably see, many nodding heads behind me from staff that are agreeing with that. One of the things that the staffing deployment study identified is that our span of control and the scope of work is too broad. That you're probably all well aware of the research of you should only be managing between three and seven things and four is pretty much optimal, but all of our chief officers are spinning multiple plates and running from one to the other to try to make that happen. So for example, you see the assistant chief John Zeimer, who's seated behind me, our operations chief. Now ideally, he should be focusing on the fire department operations, the day-to-day, making sure the calls are run, making sure that our people are providing good service, making sure that we're staffed appropriately every day. But because by default, he gets, well, we got to have somebody that manages fleet and make sure that the rigs are getting moved around between the garage and getting service and this one broke down. So he spends an inordinate amount of his time just because it's another duty as assigned, trying to work with the central garage to manage the fleet and make sure that the vehicles are getting repaired. Mission critical, needs to be done, can't not do it, but what suffers because of that? Also seated behind me is our fire marshal Brian Bending. Well, because of his familiarity with buildings and building code and by default, instead of doing all the fire marshal activities exclusively, he is spending a lot of his time on facilities. So the last two days, he's spent most of his time instead of looking at the tiny house project, the new developments that are happening in the community, are the roads going to be wide enough, are the hydrants in the right place? He's trying to get a roof put on station 18, making sure the parking lot's getting paved at station 18, dealing with the furnaces are out in the station and so the dishwasher's broken. So those are all things that have to happen to support our operation, but it's diluting from core mission. Then it trickles down to the battalion chiefs. So the battalion chiefs work their shift, they come in and work 24 hours at a time, but then they're also getting all these ancillary duties of, well, because Chief Zeimer's so busy with fleet, EMS chief, instead of worrying about the emergency medical services, make sure our special events are covered and go to those meetings and also be the liaison with the county to make sure we have radios. And then training chief, you're also going to be in charge of equipment. And like I said, it just causes this cascading trickle down where we're not able to as adequately manage as we would like to and as we need to because we're just running from plate to plate to plate to spin. What further compounds that, and we talked about last year in our budget hearings, were we are at a tip-over point on retirements, that we have this huge retirement bubble coming. So why this is so critical this year, I'll announce on his behalf that Chief Zeimer intends to retire next year. So now I'm going to have a brand-new operations chief that's trying to learn the functions and facets of that position that's overwhelmed. We'll also anticipate some attrition in the battalion chief ranks. So now when he should that position, that's now Chief Zeimer's, whoever his replacement is, needs to be developing that battalion chief who needs to be developing the captains and lieutenants that have also retired. We're going to have this huge loss of supervisory and management leadership in the organization. Again, Chief Bending, you're all well aware of growth and development in the city. We need to be making sure that we're doing that in a manner that promotes fire safety and is compliant with code. We really need him to focus on that, not making sure that stations are getting painted and re-carpeted. So this assistant chief position of support services would take those responsibilities and aggregate them into one spot and support the services of the fire department. They will make sure that our people that are forward-facing, out responding to our customers for emergencies, that they are equipped, trained, they wouldn't fall into training, they'd be equipped, they would have adequate fleet and apparatus to respond, they would have protective equipment, they would have the equipment they need to do their job, and when they return back to the station, that their station can support their, they're being there 24 hours at a time. So critical position for us, I know that lots of positions are being asked for this year. I'm certainly not going to say one position's more worthy of the other. I know it's a very tough decision, but like I said, we're humbly imploring you that we feel that is a desperate item that we, and position that we need to address.
Mike, I have a question. What is the, so I have the wages and the benefits, it's 154. What is just the wage? Do you know that number off the top of your head? What would be just the?
The wage is right around 119.
Okay, thank you.
If I remember correctly.
What would be the, I mean, think five years down the line, what would be the consequences if we didn't fund this?
I think we would very much struggle to maintain our level of services, let alone increase our services, which we desire to do, that the mission-critical items like fleet, facilities are going to continue to suffer. And that could have large implication, financial implications because as those things get, are not maintained, replaced, repaired, then you're going to have to buy a whole new one. So rather than maintaining a fire truck for $30,000 a year, you're going to buy a new one at a million dollars a year. So certainly will have some impact on recruitment and retention and morale. I said that we have a very high-performing team, high-performing organization, we're very blessed, and I'm blessed as the fire chief to have that, but you can only run on fumes for so long. So one of the things that we're anticipating some continued struggle with is when those that might be interested in advancement look at that position and say, I'd have to be crazy to do that. I'm going to take on a ton more work that's, doesn't look like a good deal. So then what's the long-term ramification of that? Well, then we have to try to find external candidates, then we're not developing our own leaders, that damages morale, that creates some retention issues of, well, if you're going to hire from somewhere else, I'll go somewhere else. So I think there will be a ripple effect long-term of if we don't fill this position and create this position, you said, organizationally, we're not going to be able to keep up. Like I said, this was something they identified as, you needed this in 2019. I'm not suggesting that, well, we should have done it three years ago because there was many needs in the department and the city. We've been able to methodically move through that recommendation. I think we're to that point.
Chief, you mentioned that calls that increased, calls or services that increased 7.7% and that's not including the reduction of those calls that we stopped responding for the transport for hospitals, right?
Correct.
So that was removed. Had we still had that in that figure, it would have been significantly higher. So even in spite of that, it's up that 7%. From the police department yesterday, we heard that 6% of their calls are related to mental health. Does the fire department capture that kind of categorization?
We do. And most of you heard me talk a lot about our number one call type is falls, by and large, falls. Two and three really interconnect. Two and three are substance-related issues, so drugs or alcohol, or what's been identified as behavioral health, mental health emergencies. So when you combine those, and they're neck and neck at two and three. So that's our next most prominent call type is mental health substance abuse. So we are seeing, have historically seen that, and then I'm sure Chief Smith talked a little bit about the increase over the past couple of years of behavioral health, mental health emergencies, substance use, deaths of despair, things like that. So we're certainly seeing that as well.
So I guess the reason I was asking that is the police department had also had an enhancement that was referencing a use of a social worker within their department. Can you imagine a scenario in which if that were to be the case, because police are typically responding along with you guys to any calls, that that would also benefit the fire department?
Absolutely.
With regards to those mental health?
Yeah, as you referenced, Mayor, their clients are the same as ours in many, many capacities that I know Chief Smith talked about, if they're suicidal, if they've overdosed, we're going to be responding as well many times and that's going to impact our responses just like they do PDs. So I know Chief Smith presented yesterday about if we can reduce the recidivism of they're not continuing the call, we can interrupt some of those cycles, it's going to bring our call volume down. I would anticipate the same result because again, like I said, they're the same customer in many, many times. So I think that position could very well impact our numbers too.
Thank you.
To confirm a little info and ask a question, currently battalion chiefs work 24 hours on, is that correct?
Correct.
And then from my knowledge, and feel free to tell me I'm wrong, I get used to it a lot at home, so after they're done with their 24-hour shift, it's not like the work ends. They've got those extra responsibilities that they're constantly taken care of, that either they're coming back to the office, they're staying later, it's not like it's 24 hours up and I'm out the door. Is that a fair assessment?
That is a very fair and accurate assessment.
Okay. Last year, we added some backfill pay for the management ranks in terms of compensating those that are doing jobs that they weren't getting paid for. I guess I'm wondering, how does adding a layer above the battalion chief level help them when we also know, or we're talking about right now, they're burnt out as well? There's multiple levels of this, but how does adding an assistant chief, another layer of management above them, help those guys who are currently burning the candle at both ends?
Absolutely. And the way that would help, given you referenced it already, is that they have those, they work their shift and then they have those additional administrative duties. This is going to help pull those administrative duties away from them so that when they do complete their shift, they're not staying another eight hours, working on things, coming back on their days off to do those administrative projects so that it will reduce their overall work hours.
At the battalion level, not, also pulling away from the assistant chief level, but helping at the battalion level as well?
Correct. So it's almost like an upward sweeping vacuum of take some of the responsibility off of the two assistant chiefs, which allows them to take some of the responsibilities that have been delegated down. So now the A-shift battalion chief, he's assigned to a 56-hour work week is the average for when they're working their shifts. But he's also responsible for protective, personal protective equipment, the bunker gear. So well, if you can't get all that done in the course of your day while you're doing your job as the battalion chief, or you know, we have three new employees, they need to get fitted, you need to coordinate that and come in and make sure they get fitted on their days they're around to get their bunker gear ordered. So that's another duty that has been put onto that battalion chief's plate of, it's almost an ironic joke about other duties as assigned of who's going to be in charge of hose? Well, I guess you are because everybody else is doing something and you're going to get all these extra assignments. We can take those assignments off of them so that they can focus on a reasonable source of [inaudible]. they can focus on a reasonable scope of responsibility. Okay? Moving on to enhancement two, you know, this was also noted in the staffing study, you know, they need to move towards AVL or Automatic Vehicle Location Technology. And what that does, you know, and the trucking industry, UPS, you know, has been using it for decades, that it's, the fire truck sends a signal to the satellite, and it goes to the computer in the dispatch center, tells it where, tells me where it is. And then when that call comes in, that call for, 911 call for service, the dispatcher and, and the computer will say, "This is the closest fire truck or the closest ambulance to that incident," and send it. You know, so, we talked earlier about the, uh, performance indicator about response times, and how do we improve that? You know, well, there's, there's a number of ways you could do that. You could have a fire station with a fire engine in it on every corner, not feasible, right? Can't sustain that model. So making sure that we, we dispatch the closest piece of equipment, you know, the closest crew to that emergency will reduce those response times. You know, and the, the way that our model is set up now is if you take, you know, your finger on, point to the middle of the map where the fire station is, you take a pencil on a string and draw a circle around it, that's your response area. But the, the model and the computer is always counting on that fire engine being at the point of your finger. You know, as they respond to other calls, that, you know, they're out doing fire inspections, they're coming back from a hospital, whatever it might be, now with this automatic vehicle location, it picks it up and says, "You know what? Engine 15 isn't the closest to this call, Engine 16." And so it's putting the, shortening that response time, so that we can put that, that resource in contact with that patient or that occupant to mitigate their emergency, and put the fire out, give them oxygen, start CPR, whatever it might be. So, we've been working for the past couple of years on that, and Gena Manasha, you know, has, has been using that system for several years. We thought we were ready to go, we get it all in place with the Communications Center, but the problem we're having is, the satellite is not accurately seeing the fire truck. So our newest pieces of equipment came with this cradle point router in the, the apparatus. So rather than having a, you know, think of it as Wi-Fi hotspots, you know, it generates the, the signal. That the, what you see on the, the first little map there is Engine 19, and it has the, the cradle point routers in it. So you see it, that tight grouping of every few seconds, this satellite's asking, "Where are you? Where are you? Where are you?" You see, it's right there where it should be in Station 19. You know, so it's very high reliability of, I know where that, that piece of equipment is, as the computer. When you look at the next page and you see Engine 16, this has the old technology in it. So, you know, I've talked to the crews about why they keep driving through Lake Winnebago. You know, and like, for instance, the ladder 15, just right down the street, spends a lot of time, not on the shore, it plots them in the middle of Lake Winnebago. You know, and as you see the arrows, you know, in that, that top, upper left, you see how they're, they're spread apart? They're losing signal. You know, so instead of picking them up in that tight grouping, like you see towards the right, it's what it should look like, we're losing that connectivity. You know, until we address this connectivity issue, we can't go to the Automatic Vehicle Location, and that's why we're asking for the enhancement of the, the monies to purchase, install those cradle points, so that we can move to this technology, we can implement this model, and we can reduce our response times, improve our performance metric, and ultimately improve outcomes. Said, we're, we're very confident that this will work. PD has been using the cradle point technology for over a year now, it's worked very effectively for them. I said, we've tested in our new apparatus, you know, that, uh, very confident this is going to be our solution, you know, to be able to, to make that, that initiative happen. Questions on that?
Um, so, I, I think we talked a little bit yesterday about the, the radio request for PD and Fire, right?
Yes.
Is that not somehow interrelated or connected in with the radio technology? I mean, or is this vehicle-specific?
It's, it's vehicle-specific, you know, it needs a, an antenna, you know, it needs that Wi-Fi hotspot, basically. You know, so, is, is not integrated with the radios, no.
Is it the equivalent of a signal booster for Wi-Fi?
Theoretically, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, moving to enhancement request three, you know, we also really need to address our policies and guidelines. So, the Fire Department is driven by, you know, in, in any public safety entity, is really driven by policy and guideline. You know, then although we have the city's employee handbook that addresses, you know, higher-level things like payroll and sexual harassment and, um, work, you know, safety boots and things like that, you know, we still need those organizational-specific things of, what do you do when a high-rise is on fire? You know, what do you do when you're exposed to a blood product on a scene? You know, that, all those more operational-specific, uh, things to, to public safety. That, right now, our, uh, Operations and Guidelines Manual is 700 pages, and, and that has not been whole-scale, had much updating, you know, we've done things as, you know, we need to address them, but, you know, that really hasn't been visited since 2003 or 2007, for some of them. You know, so what we would like to do is, there is a service called LexiPoll, you know, and what they do is, they develop and maintain and have a storage system for policies and guidelines, for public safety entities, i.e. the fire service. So, what's, uh, the benefit to that is, one, you see on there, is the implementation merge. So, much like I talked about with the frayed rope, you know, you say, "Why haven't you addressed that 700-page monstrosity that, you know, tackle that animal? Bandwidth." You know, we just, as we've been implementing other, other initiatives, you know, we, we haven't had the ability and, you know, the infrastructure to do that. That, so the, the beauty and benefit of LexiPoll is not only do they employ subject matter experts, they also employ attorneys, you know, so they constantly, so not, they would, this $45,000, they would take our existing policies, evaluate those, look at the needs that we have, you know, where are our shortcomings, and take, you know, policy-specific to us, for example, the AirVenture Air Show, you know, and integrate those into, into a management, record management system. And then what they do is, as they look at the, these policies, we subscribe to a service annually where there's new federal or state legislation that changes. NFPA require, National Fire Protection Association requirements change. You know, they're constantly monitoring that, evaluating and rewriting policies, and they'll send us the updates. So this, you know, truly becomes a living document that, that advances through perpetuity, rather than, "Oh, my gosh, we haven't looked at this in 10 years, we better look at it." You know, that we get those things updated routinely. You know, why is it important? You know, again, I talked about, uh, the, that's what drives our performance, you know, and that, that's a standard we need to, to hold personnel accountable to, needs to be the, the guiding documents for our operations, but really, that's what protects our, our personnel, you know, it's good policy. The VITs, you see, um, I took this right off LexiPoll's website, of best practice resources to help you keep your personnel and community members safe. You know, and that's really what this enhancement, this initiative is about. You know, how do we make sure that we are reducing risk and organizational liability? You know, and sadly, you know, in my world, many times we have to, to look at firefighter, line-of-duty deaths, you know, as, as instruments of change and awareness, that, you know, and I've been involved with, uh, line-of-duty deaths, and, you know, certainly have talked to many people across the country that have been involved, and when that happens, the first thing that occurs with the federal investigators and certainly the attorneys say, "We'd like to see your policy. Give me your policies." You know, or should we have the unfortunate circumstance where we're being sued by a community member, you know, for a wrongful death or some other type of civil litigation, they say, "Let me see your policies." And they proceed to tear those policies apart, and you say, you know, "These aren't updated, these aren't current," and, you know, now we're taking on that organizational liability. A few years back, there was a study that the average line-of-duty death, wrongful death su, settlement for a line-of-duty death was $8.4 million. You know, so, what's concerning to me is not only are we not, you know, providing a good guiding document, that, you know, it needs updated, but we have this tremendous amount of organizational risk involved with that. You know, so, look, we look at this very much as somewhat of an insurance policy to, can we mitigate risk for $60,000 and potentially prevent millions of dollars of liability?
Are these all digital, or are these hard copy, or both?
They can be, be, they are digital, but, you know, can be printed, you know, and what's, uh, nice is that they also provide that infrastructure, that records management system, so it's accessible on the web, you know, if I'm on a call, I can pull it up on the computer in the fire truck on my phone, look at that policy, can access it, they get updates when the policy changes, and they also provide, you know...
It's like a software upload kind of thing?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, you know, it gives us acknowledgement that you read the policy, you know, I can pull in there, go, "Who's, who's not reading the policies? Mike Ford isn't, you know, he hasn't acknowledged the last few, we're going to go have a talk with Mike Ford." And then it also sends out a quiz on the policy. So, you see, yeah, you, you clearly comprehend this, or you do not, you know, you've, you've failed the last seven quizzes on the policies, maybe we need to have some instructional intervention with you, you know, so very, very robust system.
So, this is, uh, it's a one-time policy implementation, but it's an annual subscription, so are you planning on only using it for one year?
No, we would, would use it year to year.
I think you answered the question, but I just want to make sure I ask it, and so I'm just clear. How are you currently handling training updates and policy updates that are occurring? Because you're using, obviously, you know, there's state and federal standards that you're using in, in terms of your EMS and Fire. Are you currently implementing any of those updates and those changes right now?
And so, you know, we internally will update that, that policy, then we distribute it to monthly training to our staff, you know, to our employees, so they'll get, uh, the assignment of, "You need to review Policy 1, 2, 3, 4." But there's no test for comprehension, I mean, we can, I can see that you opened the policy, you know, that you clicked on it and opened the document, but there, it does not provide us the same level of acknowledgement, and like I said, there's no, uh, record of understanding and comprehension as well. Now, also, an additional benefit of this LexiPoll system, you know, you've probably heard me talk about our desire to be an accredited agency, you know, and, you know, that's part of why we're doing this strategic planning, that the LexiPoll works hand-in-hand with the Center for Public Safety Excellence to ensure those policies are compliant with the needs for accreditation. So it'll also help that transition of, we know that we're, we're using Gould Standard stuff as we go through that accreditation process.
Chief, are these three enhancements listed in the order of importance?
Let me make sure I remember the order. Yes, correct.
Yes, sir.
And we also have a special revenue budget.
Chief, before you go on to that, I just wanted to make sure council's familiar with the AVL is actually a recommendation for myself to be funded through ARPA funds and not through levy. So when you look at that schedule of budget enhancements I sent you last night, it's color-coded as a potential consideration of ARPA funds, so my recommendation to council would not use levy dollars for that, but use it as a one-time funding source of ARPA funding for.
Thank you.
One brief follow-up on that one. What's life cycle on the cradle points? What's the anticipated? It's technology.
Right.
I'm just wondering when you're going to come, when we've got to replace it.
I would say somewhere in the range of five to 10 years. Like you said, it's technology, it's, but it's pretty well-established.
Okay.
Technology, so, the other benefit, and let me clarify, too. This enhancement will get all of our, our apparatus to that standard. As we move through the replacement cycle, that will be included in the purchase of the new apparatus, like the last two fire engines we bought, the new ambulances that we'll purchase next year will have that, so it should passively replace itself.
Okay.
Through the, the attrition of fleet.
The natural attrition, then.
Yeah.
Sort of like satellite radio, it's built into the new vehicles, it's not in the old ones, you got to subscribe.
Getting back to the Mayor's question, though, it's more, almost more like GPS in your, in your car.
Yep.
It's, it's mapping where the car is in relationship to roads and everything else.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that, that question, that helped me remember to clarify that. We have a special revenue budget that starts on page 279, that, historically, this budget has been our mechanism, we receive, because of our contracts with state and county, to provide hazardous material services, because of some reimbursement funding, grant funding that happens around emergency medical services, you know, for a number of years, we've received monies in from that to support our hazmat team, to support some of our operations, and this also provides that mechanism, like many of the other budgets that you've discussed, for, you know, gifts, grants, donations as well. So, and we'll continue to, to utilize that, you know, primarily, the majority of those dollars goes towards the operation and, uh, equipment for the hazardous material team.
Also another way to keep around expenditure restraint, when these come in, we don't want to say no to them.
You know, then the last thing you have in your packet we gave you, Capital Improvement Plan, uh, we've already been familiarized with this, and we've already approved it, you know, we certainly appreciate the funding that we've received for a number of different projects that will enhance our safety and our ability to provide service. You know, just one other thing I'd like to, to, to call to note is, you know, these, these are mission-critical projects. I know I use that term a lot, but, you know, in, in our industry, that's where we spend, spend our time, that's the space we occupy. You know, that's, we can't really delay some of these things, you know, we have to, to purchase the protective equipment, we have to purchase hose, we have to have heart monitors. You know, this, this is a lot of projects that are going to occur in the next five years, that, you know, totaling 11 and a half million dollars, you know, that we're, you know, as of today, that we're planning for in the, the Capital Improvement Plan over the next five-year period. You know, and that's a tremendous investment by council and the community, you know, of tax dollars to, to improve the Fire Department. You know, and one of the things that, that I'm very cognizant of is, how do we be good stewards to that money? And make sure that we use it wisely, that we use it effectively, you know, and that we have the outcomes that we had hoped for. You know, so one of the things that, that worries me in relation to that lack of administrative support is, how, how do we support these, these projects and manage these projects? And so, when I look at that 11 and a half million dollars, I said, "We need a project manager." So I, I talked to Short, Hendrick, Elliott and Hendrickson, you know, some other architectural firms, we reached out to some IT project managers, and we said, "What's the norm? What's the norm for projects? You know, what do you, if you're going to have this big development, this big project, what do you expect that to pay in project management fees?" And they said, "Eh, it can be anywhere as high as 12, but it's usually right around six to eight." He said, "That's a good rule of thumb for you to work off of." Okay, very good. So then, I took, you know, the, "What are we going to pay for that Assistant Chief position for the, the next..." for the, the next four, five years in paying benefits? And that brought us right about to, you know, three quarters of a million dollars. You know, and as I, I further extrapolated that math out and said, what's six and a half, what percentage of that three quarters of a million dollars is that 11 and a half? You know, we're right at about six and a half percent. So we're, we're right there in that sweet spot of what you would anticipate to pay a project manager. So I said, you know, if it's serendipitous that those all lined up and said, you know what? We've identified this need internally. The staffing study identified it. You know, and we look at it from a project management perspective, it also lines up very well too. So we think that furthers our case of that this would be a very opportune time and, you know, a good decision to, to add that assistant chief. With that being said, again, I always thank you for the support from the common council for the work we do. You know, certainly to all the people in the viewing audience, appreciate the support from the community that we receive to, to operate the fire department. You know, thank you for your time and be happy to answer any questions you may still have. Cause I've got like two hours and 15 minutes left.
So page 150, we're gonna go right to, to the fund numbers. Regular and overtime. Can, can you explain a little bit? Probably one of the few, few budgets we've looked at that is well over on regular pay and-
And expenses?
And overtime's up. And I'll premise it with, and you'll smile underneath the mask, I know you will. We had a, we had a fun conversation this time last year, virtually. Um, and one of the offsets of getting some additional firefighters was a reduction in overtime.
Yeah. Yeah, and as I talked to the, the city manager about that, I really liked the, his, his take on it. He said, we gave you an assignment, you know, to try to reduce the overtime by additional hiring. You know, and we weren't able to, to do that. And he said, I consider that an incomplete. You know, and I think that's really a, a good viewpoint. Because, you know, while we had a extreme desire to make that happen, you know, for, to be more financially and fiscally responsible, to reduce workload, you know, we're having some of the same struggles that all of my peer department heads are having, that I've heard him talk to you about, that all of you are probably experiencing in your workplaces, that's, you know, across the nation and, you know, fire departments across the nation are struggling with. The supply is not meeting the demand. So we are not able to find the, the staff, you know, the candidate, eligible candidates. And also we had a lot of attrition this past year. You know, so we're, we weren't able to keep up with the retirements, you know, let alone add extras. So do we still think that's a necessary move? Yes, absolutely. You know, do I view it as an incompletion? I do. You know, still want to, to make that happen. You know, and we're implementing a lot of strategies and working collaboratively with, you know, a number of different entities to try to find ways to find employees, but have not, you know, been able to, to implement that yet.
Chief, so could you take the 7.7% increase in calls and I guess break out the math there for how that equates to overtime if it relates?
I think in a roundabout way it, it can, because the number of calls going, going up increases the workload, you know, so and increases our responses. You know, so they have more opportunity to get injured, you know, that, you know, are exposed. So does that lead them to time off from work, you know, which then compounds with overtime? Burnout, you know, is an issue we talked a lot about last year as well. So does it increase that risk of burnout, you know? Does it affect, you know, if I'm up all night, does that impact my immune system? It absolutely does. You know, so now I'm, I'm fighting off, you know, cold and flu and, you know, sickness, so I need to call in sick. You know, so then that, does that relate to necessity for overtime to fill those positions? I think it does. You know, can I show you a direct correlation and, you know, a number associated with that? Probably not, but instinctively, yes.
I guess my other question is, I'll ask the same thing that I asked the chief of police yesterday, and that is, the vaccination and COVID infection is, has that also impacted the fire department in terms of personnel?
It, it has. You know, as we've had, you know, people either infected and off because they're sick or off because they're required to quarantine, you know, absolutely has, has been a driver for overtime. You know, that we've, we've seen, you know, I hate to use the term significant, because we certainly haven't been hit as hard as other departments throughout the country, but it's generated a lot of leave time. You know, so that, that has increased our, our necessity for overtime as well.
May I ask, do you guys have a rough idea of your vaccination rate?
That we polled our, our employees in May of this year, you know, and just anonymously, you know, self-report, cause we wanted to see kind of where we were at. And we were right in the mid 70th percentile. You know, so, and that, like I said, was pretty early on in the, the vaccination. We had a lot of folks that had, were, had been exposed and weren't out of the window yet at that time, you know, so. And we had a very high participation rate in that survey. You know, so we're, you know, well, 70% of the 10 people that responded, you know, big deal, you know, that we had almost 100% answers to this, this survey. So I would, would hazard a guess of we're into the 80s percentile now for vaccination.
Thank you.
One last question. The reduction in ambulatory revenue directly tied to elimination of the non-emergency transport or other factors?
Yes. You know, there, there would be some reduction in revenue because of that discontinuing of transfers, but you can see it in some of the, the charts, you know, particularly in 2020 and even early 2021, where our call volume went like this, you know, cause nobody wanted to go to a, a hospital, nobody was calling 911. And we saw that, you know, pretty much across the whole region, that everybody's call volume went like that and then went back like that. So that generated a loss, a lot of loss of revenue that way as well.
Are you talking about on the, uh, let's see here. I think it was page four. April of 2020?
Mm-hmm.
That big cliff there?
Yep.
Okay. I was, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, that everybody just shut down. That, you know, as we talked to, to other colleagues across the state and throughout the region, they said the same thing, all their call volumes for, for ambulance transports bottomed out absolutely for a while. You know, they said, anecdotally, we all attribute to that too, you know, people were scared to death to go to the hospital, you know, or, or said, you know what, I'm not that sick. I really don't need to use that. Save it for all the, the people that are infected with COVID. So, so that had some pretty large implications on the revenue.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Throughout the process, if I can be of any service, answer more questions, please don't hesitate to call me.
Thanks, chief.
Gotta go. I'm back for you.
Thanks.
I'll be back.
I'll try to watch as much as I can online, but-
Cool.
Yeah, tune in-
Anything comes to mind question-wise, just-
Okay.
Yeah, make sure you tune in there for Mark's wrap-up.
Yes.
I know.
My stretch?
It's that time.
Give us a chance to stretch.
Actually, I've been kind of alternating with-
After lunch.
Hot, freezing.
Stop all the lights.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9.
Oh my gosh. Right, so we are at Transportation. Jim Collins, welcome.
Thank you. I don't know what order you're going. I think what I'd like to do though is start with the utilities, because I want to make sure we have enough time that we got a couple of things we need to talk about so we don't unfortunately, so we don't run out of time.
We just have Transportation, so it's your.
So let's start with the Transit Utility, which is on page 440...449. So for the Transit Utility, while you guys are taking a look at that, just kind of want to go over some of the high level things. With the Transit Utility, obviously 2020 then going into 2021, we're still in that pandemic type world. So the good news is in 2020, we did receive CARES Act funding and we were able to accomplish quite a few things that will both help us with the pandemic and going forward with that money. So it just highlights some of the things we were able to do with that money. We were able to put into driver protective barriers, so the doors between the drivers and the passengers. And the benefit besides the COVID protection with that is it also protects the drivers against assaults, which is becoming unfortunately more frequent, not necessarily in Oshkosh, but throughout the country. We were at a conference a couple of weeks ago and we've heard from our peers that that unfortunately is becoming more common occurrence. So people are installing those to protect their drivers from both the germs as well as from assaults. So we were able to do that. We were able to introduce mobile fares. So now you can buy your bus passes and fare on your phone, which also gives us an option where you can buy fares via credit card, where we didn't have that in the past, because we don't have the credit card payment stations at our facility or anywhere else for that matter. So that gives you an option as well. We installed air purification systems on each of the buses. So again, that will help, you know, not only with the pandemic, but going forward as well. We change those filters quarterly and that system runs continually while the bus is on. We did some small things like the hand sanitizing stations. Another big thing we were able to do is quantum automatic wheelchair securement systems. So we have a prototype we installed beginning of this year. We've received the rest of them in. So all the buses will have them within a year. So we have 16 buses. We now, by the end of this year, 12 of them will have that. And then we have four new buses coming next year that will also have that. So one side has the automatic securement system where the rider can independently secure themselves, pull forward, back in, push a button and secure their chairs. So that is good for the drivers in that they don't have to have that close personal contact. But it's also good for the riders because it gives them some independence that they don't have to have somebody assist them. They can do it themselves if they choose. They are rear facing. So if they're not comfortable with that, then we have the regular securement system on the other side where the driver can help them out. So kind of got the best of both worlds. We haven't heard any negative. We only have one person that's complained a little bit about it, but we tell them you got the option, you know, use the other side then, so you can do that. So we're able to do that. We are currently, we just had our pre-bid meeting today for a small addition to our driver comfort station, which is basically the restroom for the drivers downstairs. So they'll actually have a brake facility that also allow us to have a driver... The brake room, it's a computer station. We'll have the ability to have a supervisor downtown, which will help not only now, but going forward, so that they can interact and deal with any passenger issues as well as answer any questions. And then we'll have the ability to have somebody down there for customer service on a part-time basis. We're not asking for any additional staff. We'll use our current staff and staff that for a few hours a week. So that's in the works. And also in addition, with that renovation, we'll be renovating the platform, doing some painting, improving the landscaping around that facility and it'll be a beautification effort as well, eliminating some tripping hazards. We increased our social media presence in conjunction with the pandemic. We have a company called Red Shoes that's managing our social media and helping us with that. We meet with them every other week to kind of go over some of that. And that's been kind of nice as well. They're a DBE as well, which helps us with some federal requirements. But that's been a welcome addition. We just finished replacing our fuel station at the Transit Garage. We add fuel tanks from 1980, where for the last few years, our insurance company's been raising our deductibles and our premiums. And actually last year, they threatened to non-renew us unless we replaced them. So we're fortunate that we got that project done. That was funded 80% with a federal grant. So we're still waiting on a tank, new tank monitor, which because of COVID has been in a back order. But other than that, it's operational. So those are some of the highlights of the things we've done. Some of the things that we've got coming up this coming year. As you're well aware, we're at the end of our paratransit contract. So that's out for RFP currently. We anticipate we'll be getting those back here in the coming weeks and then evaluating them and making a recommendation for a vendor for the next three to five years going forward. Also, we have an RFP out for Route 10. Currently Route 10, if you aren't familiar, that's the route that goes between Oshkosh and Nina and connects Valley Transit to Go Transit. So we have an RFP out for that. It currently is status quo. We've looked at some things with our cost commuter study on I-41, along with our peers and the planning commission. We've been doing studies on it the last couple of years. Last year, we did a study. It just, we didn't get the results we had hoped for because employers weren't really thinking about that at the time. They had obviously the pandemic going on and the university helped us with some surveying, but we just didn't feel like it was, we got the results of the study that we needed in order to move forward. So that's kind of on the shelf for now, once things get back to a little more normal where we can maybe get some employer support. We still think there's a better option for Route 10. However, we didn't want to proceed with something and have it fail. And Valley Transit felt the same way. We just felt like it's just, we didn't get the survey results that we thought we needed. One, and number two, before we do something new, we want to make sure that there's a pretty good chance it's going to succeed. So Route 10 is currently status quo. We are disappointed in the ridership on that route, so we really think that going forward, there's a better option. So we're going to continue to evaluate that and figure out what that looks like over the next year or two. But that's still, I think it's still important to get people that work one area or the other back and forth, or that want to connect to Valley Transit or come from the Valley to connect here. In the past, we've had students and professors that have rode that route. With the pandemic, those, they tend to disappear as well. So we're hoping some of that comes back and we'll evaluate that. But for now, it's status quo. So we got that going on. The other important thing that we have to look at going forward. I mentioned before that we're not requesting any enhancements. I know it's a rough budget year. However, we are fortunate with the CARES Act and some ARPA. But going forward, that's something we're going to have to look at, especially in relation to the census, which was completed this year. I know the mayor's familiar a little bit with this from her previous background. But the census in 2010, they tried to put Appleton and Oshkosh in the same UZA, the urban planning area. And there's a lot of talk that they may be trying to do that again with the census. So if that happens, potentially what could happen is they would combine Appleton and Oshkosh into the urban planning area. For transit, how that's relevant then, would we be considered one urban area as far as funding goes? Now operationally, it won't have too big of an effect. Both systems will still continue to operate separately. We'll have Go Transit, we'll have Valley Transit. However, the funding will differ in that currently, our funding comes through the state. If we get put in that larger area, then it'll come direct from the feds. And the state will help fill any gap in funding. So we'll still get the same percentage of funding as our peers will. However, it will bring additional reporting requirements. So how we get our funding should be similar, but with those new reporting requirements, it's going to mean we're going to need some additional staff to handle that. Right now, for instance, Valley Transit, for example, has over three to four people that do basically Steve's responsibility and they have two to three people that do mine. And they're not all that much larger than us, but it's just all those additional reporting requirements that are, that come with that. Once you get that, you get under the federal, you get the federal funding, but then you also have the federal regulations, which we follow now. But the state takes some of that burden off right now because we're considered a small urban area. But if they put us in with Appleton and make us a larger urban area, there's going to be additional reporting that's going to shift from the state to us.
Would we share those positions under that umbrella?
No.
No, because being two separate systems, I've talked to the state and the feds about that. They said they'll still look at us as two separate entities with two separate audits. So we'll be responsible for our things. They'll be responsible for theirs. However, there are, we have talked to Valley Transit. There are some things that we might be able to do together, like marketing, for instance. We could probably share some of those things that would help both of our systems. We already have a pretty good partnership with them and we do obviously work together quite a bit on a lot of things. But as far as the funding and the reporting goes, they look at those as two separate, completely separate systems. So they got separate audits and separate reporting requirements.
When will you know that change is made?
Well, that's a good question. They're supposed to talk about some of the stuff at the end of this year, but they keep shifting the dates around, so it's, I can't tell you for sure.
Yeah, I mean, the census numbers came out at an off time and I know what we'll be talking about it at the regional plan. Update, comprehensive plan update too, I'm sure tomorrow.
It also has to do at a larger level, who else is being impacted by this same rule? As much as we like to pat ourselves on the back for achieving 10 years ago not to have it happen, it was really Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and they had a very influential congressman and senator who ended up pushing this through that we got thrown into the same category as Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. And suddenly, we were, we were out of it. So it's sort of a roll of the dice and who's, who's in a similar boat. I don't know if we have that poll right now that we could do that. But is there another Harrisburg, Pennsylvania? Perhaps. We'll find out. But that's a little political senility, or not senility, maybe senility, but being very skeptical on my part, but cross our fingers we might, we might luck out.
So that's something that's on our radar. We've obviously known about this for a number of years. So we've been talking with Valley Transit and the state and the feds as well. So that's, those are things that are happening that, so we're currently really busy with procurements. Those are, we have, which was previously approved. We have four buses that'll be coming next year, two hybrids and two clean diesels, that we should get third quarter next year. That'll bring our fleet up to date. Those are kind of some of the high level, big things going on. You look a little bit, as far as operationals, operationally goes, our ridership remains a little bit low. We are seeing it come back a little bit. We've been, since the student's been back in school, that's, I know that's something council's interested in, the student ridership. So I got, so Steve Thomas X, our operational manager, I just asked him to report kind of what our student ridership was.
Yeah, year-to-date, total student ridership, 51,480, it says, of the end of September. Versus last year, program was in place, but with COVID, it only had 2,541. So it's been a huge, huge uptick in student ridership. The breakdown is primarily through six to 12, Oshkosh, 47,598. We've got a small parochial, six to 12, which is year-to-date 415, and the rest is K-5, 3,467.
In terms of that data, you don't need to share it now if you have an answer. But do you have in your tracking software, do you know ridership for individual routes for the students?
Yes. I don't have that on.
No, I don't, and I don't need to, in terms of when the timing is right, that part, that data will be, I think, important for the conversation in terms of, you know, what segments and what areas of this community are needing that assistance and which ones aren't. And I think it'll be, you know, in terms of equity and access to getting to school safely, I think it'll be, it'll be important. So appreciate it.
Yeah, I can tell you right now, the, from student ridership, it's Oshkosh West, which is Route 6 after school. We do have another route that deviates, but that one's always full. And then Oshkosh North has Route 2, right, that's always full. Although we have Route 4 goes there as well. So those are the two that are, they're full after school, both the high school routes, they're standing room only.
That's the expected as well.
And some of them have to, they get turned away. My granddaughter uses that. And she and her friends have said they've had to wait like for the next one. I've gotten the call. Can you come get us? I'm like, no, you can wait for another 20 minutes. You need to get up, get out there and hustle, get to... But it sounds like their dad is successfully accomplishing so far that we know. The question is like, what is the sustainability of that program beyond? Are we one year out from the three or two?
So it's, well, two things. So yeah, like, so Lori was talking about the, so Route, Route 2 comes Oshkosh North, it gets full. We also have Route 4, which comes, but it's not, depends where you live. You might have to transfer if you take that route. So most of the students prefer Route 2, so then they have to, the plus with our 30-minute service is you only have to wait a 30 minutes and then another bus will be there. So that, that's the benefit to that. But yeah, it's, I'm sorry, I lost what year other.
No, what?
We're halfway through.
How many more years?
We extended a year.
We're a year and a half in.
Right, okay.
So what, the city manager and I talked to the school district last year and we agreed that, so last year, they had, it's the third, 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 right? So the city's a third, the school district was a third, and then the private donors were a third. We only had the private donors funding for the first third. So we agreed to take that since last year. We didn't have the ridership of the program since school was virtual. So that was applied to this current school year. So right now, then, the school district will need to come up with funding for their third and the private third by next June. So it is a three-year pilot, however, it's only been funded for one year. So we do have it obviously in our budget for the city contribution. But come next June, that's going to be the question for the school district, where their third and the private donors' third's coming from.
I think if I remember right, the total amount was around 90,000? So is the number of riders, riders you're seeing from students, is that matching what you estimated the cost would be?
Yes, actually, we just did that analysis a couple of weeks ago and right now, we're good. That's about, it was 93.5 and we kind of figured out what the fares would be. Discounted obviously because there's transfers and then there's obviously monthly passes, so you can't just take a one-way fare. But with that, the program at the 93.5 is covering what we need. So I think it'll be.
Good guesstimate.
Yeah, we took a shot at what we thought the number would be needed and we're.
In the ballpark.
Doing all right. Yeah, so that, that makes me feel good.
Right.
It's just sustaining it, which is what we said from the get-go.
So the last thing I wanted to point out is the transit levy is constant. So that was a conscious decision on the part of the finance director and city manager that we're remaining that, the levy support constant. However, our costs are going up, so that difference come the end of the year is going to be either out of fund balance and/or CARES Act, whatever we need. It's hard with us with budgeting. It's difficult because we don't find out what our actual funding is from the state until March or April. So I won't know what our 2022 funding percentage is until probably April of '22. So we got to budget the best we can. Then once we get that, we generally are under budget. So that helps with the levy support as well, where we don't need quite as much. Now, the last few years, as with other departments, fuel's been low, which has been helping. So that, we don't know what that's going to be. Obviously, fuel's going to go up for next year, so I guess we'll see. But we have adequate fund balance and then we also have what we think will be a little bit of CARES Act money to fall back on. So that'll keep the ballot, the budget in check.
Probably for Finance Director Van Gompel, but just curious, between 2019, 2020, the dramatic change in property tax revenues for transit? Curious if there was a different revenue source. It went from 166,000 to 100,000 to 809,000.
Check that line 4262. They moved it from, it was an accounting maneuver, four lines down, 4262.
Yeah, that was it.
I remember, I think that came up last year, but I just remembered, or maybe the year before, but I remember a discussion on that one.
Okay. Okay, so it's always been on the property tax.
The property tax levy support is 4102?
Yeah.
And the other stuff is just stuff coming in from other governmental agencies?
No, but he means the 4262.
There was an accounting reason.
Right. It was understated. But now it balances out when you have the two together.
Thank you.
Just a question to Jim on 452, that KPI of residential units near bus routes. So we're at, we're kind of holding at 86% within a quarter mile. Do we by any chance have a map that shows like where the other 14% are not within that quarter mile? are not within that quarter mile? And I assume this is city, not OASD district boundaries that we're referring to in this KPI, right?
Right. Yeah, I, um, we can get that. This basically, this comes from our GIS department. Um, so they, they calculated that for us. Um, so we probably should get a new map and get that updated. Uh, we had a little bit of turnover the last couple of years in our GIS coordinator, so, um, we haven't updated that in a little while, so we're probably due to do that.
Oh, so that twenty-twenty-one, so these last five years may not be accurate?
It, it's still very, very close.
Okay.
That number doesn't change much because our routes haven't changed.
Right, but we add more homes, right?
It's not ridership though, that's the thing. That's why that number isn't going to change a heck of a lot. If we had a sudden subdivision, say, the southwest part of town that isn't near a route, then you'd see this number drop because it wouldn't be close to a route. But it does reflect if ridership picks up or something like that. That's going to be fairly static. It's a so-so measure.
Yeah, what it, what it's meant to show is how accessible go transit is if you live in the city.
Right.
So it's meant to show that, you know, eighty-six percent of the housing units are within a quarter mile of a bus stop. So, um, it's not, like Mark said, it's not going to change much, but yeah, we definitely can do that and we can definitely get a map that shows that. I mean, I can tell you anecdotally where it is, but we could get a map.
I mean, it, it, maybe a map isn't necessary if that fourteen percent, it's, um, you know, just slightly outside the quarter mile. I mean, I guess that's visually maybe a little easier to digest, but what area are you thinking?
Um, the two areas that I would say that we don't have transit service are the southeast corner. So there's like, I know like where Cherry Park apartments, apartments are and that southeast industrial park. Um, so kind of where the Fox Valley Tech, their second campus is down Oregon there. Um, cause our, our route ends at twentieth and Oregon. So there's that area to the south there. That's probably the biggest area that would a little bit of, a little bit of a gap. And then there's a little bit on the northwest corner, kind of where the.
Riff Road?
Riff Road.
Yeah, and then there's a trailer court up there that we haven't heard, heard a lot from that in the last five years, but maybe when it first started, maybe six, seven years ago, we'd get calls once in a while from that area. Those are the two most obvious.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it for transit unless you have any other questions. All right.
What's next, Jim?
Um, then let's go to the parking utility. That's the other one we have to have a discussion on, which is on four forty-seven, I believe. Four forty-five. So the, the parking utility, um, it's kind of a misnomer in some ways. We call it a utility. However, we don't generate any revenue because we don't have paid parking in theory. Um, we do have some paid parking, but our only paid parking is basically, the only revenue we get in that account is from monthly parking permits, um, and then the parking tickets that are issued downtown and selling some overnight permits, which is generally to the, um, college students. So the parking utility is more or less a break even fund. Uh, we fund the maintenance of the parking lots is funded mostly through either the streets' budget or the parks budget. The parks does some of the sidewalks and things like that downtown, and then the streets department plows the lots. Um, if we were going to build new parking lots, we fund those now through the CIP. Um, and that was a conscious decision as far as funding those, um, through the parking CIP that was made some years ago because the parking utility is basically, it was underwater at that time. Now I would say it's maybe break even. Um, but like I said, if you really allocated all the cost to the utility of the maintenance of the lots and everything, it would probably be underwater. Um, so with that being said, the big discussion for this year is the discussion we have with the bid every year since I've been here. And I looked back and this discussion's been going back to at least the year two thousand. Um, so the bid is, I'll try to give it out, you a high level, um, picture. So it was formed at one time for free parking. That's the reason they formed it, because they wanted free parking. So they formed a downtown business improvement district. They funded the parking utility. Um, at that time, I think it was up to maybe like seventy-five thousand at one time. It's gradually dwindled down. And then like I said, somewhere around the year two thousand, they started saying, we don't want to pay for parking. We don't think that's a good use of our money. We want to do beautification downtown. We want to market downtown, which was, which is great. Um, so going forward then, that happened every year until like around two thousand sixteen. We did a parking study around two thousand sixteen. Um, we hired Walker Parking Consultants. There was some talk about a parking ramp. The, the parking study concluded that we had adequate parking, that we didn't need additional parking. It was during the day, like if you go down there downtown now, the parking's probably at forty to fifty percent capacity, um, at three o'clock, which is, you know, around happy hour time or so. The only time we really have any parking problems is maybe if we had a special event, we had a really busy water fest or something like that, then you can still find parking, but it might be further away. So in conjunction with that, at the end of that study, we asked them, okay, so how should we manage this parking utility? Because like I said, it's not really functioning as a utility. So they gave us recommendations to do paid parking on Main Street, um, and then to do free parking timed, three, two to four hour parking in the parking lots behind Main Street. Um, so the paid parking was basically being on Main Street, maybe one block off each way. Um, that initially the bid members and some of the other council members supported it. However, when it came time to where the rubber meets the road, a lot of the bid members then no longer supported it, started talking out against it, getting other people against it. So that, short story is that died. So then at that point, we told the part, the bid, all right, well, we're not going to do that, but we still need, at that time, I think it was twenty thousand a year to help fund the utility. And it got dwindled down to, I think, eighteen and then fifteen. So it's currently at fifteen. So I have fifteen thousand in here in the parking utility budget. So we had the meeting with the bid again this year, um, the city manager and I did, and they, this year they're taking it out of their budget. So we have to make a decision. We can take it out of this budget, but then that's, it's fifteen thousand dollars short for this budget. I don't know if, uh, the city manager wants to add anything to that, but that's, I think that's a synopsis of where we're at.
Yeah, I think, you know, I did talk about it a little bit yesterday because we had the bids budget and I, I gave the council a little preview. The bid feels that they're doing a lot of value-added items for, um, the downtown refuse pickup, uh, street beautification, and they feel their funds should be focused there rather than in parking. Um, you know, I pointed out that the city spent about three million dollars in twenty-ten to redo the four hundred block parking lot and fifteen thousand was a small price to pay for that. So we're sort of at loggerheads. I mean, they've got their philosophical approaches. We're just totally different on our philosophical approach to this. Um, uh, and I, I think they're just, they're, they're just done with wanting to support it. Council holds the ultimate authority on this because you approve the bid's budget and operating plan. You can't amend it. You say thumbs up or thumbs down. And if you say thumbs down, it goes back to them. They have to redo it. Now, the message could be clear, but you know, if, if you want to accept the bid's approach, it's not that I disagree with it from, from their philosophical standpoint, but we got to find fifteen thousand for Jim then.
It's not one time. It's in perpetuity.
It is perpetuity, yeah. And that, and there's, therein lies a dilemma.
When was the bid formed? Does anybody know what year the bid formed?
Well, I might. They started making payments around nineteen ninety. It looks like the. The bid was created in.
We got rid of the parking meters right after I got here. That was on me. The bid, I think the bid is about nineteen ninety because Bill.
No, it was, uh.
Nineteen eighty-seven.
It's in their budget page.
Nineteen eighty-seven, September seventeenth.
Yeah.
And it was, they wanted to maintain free parking and at that time they agreed to reimburse fifty-seven thousand to cover lost revenue and expenses for continued maintenance enforcement of parking and converted, uh, that's just other notes, but yeah, that's when it started.
Yes, I recall there was a four hundred thousand dollar price tag for the automated system that was a, a possible recommendation, but the bid didn't want to fund that and we were not, it didn't pass council to pay for.
Five years ago?
No, this would have been in two thousand, yeah.
Yes, five years ago, two thousand sixteen.
Yeah. Cause that was when I first came on and my first assignment was parking utility. Um, but that was at a point where they wanted to go back to paid parking.
Right, yeah, that was, that was some of the capital costs. However, you know, between the city and then we would have worked out the capital costs and it would have been paid back and, you know, I can't remember exactly. It was five to ten years, it would have paid itself back. And then going forward, there would have been a revenue source for not a lot, but enough. That, that paid parking system would have funded also what they called, um, parking ambassadors. So instead of CSOs enforcing parking, you would have had somebody down there working, basically not only managing but parking and tickets, but also helping people find places to park and, um, being ambassadors. But yeah, that, that's, uh, that was in two thousand sixteen, but.
So, so just housekeeping wise, I'm sorry, back to what you're saying. Um, so Russ, if council did not approve the, any section, but more specifically here, the bids portion of the budget, would that be like amending this until that could be sent back to them?
There's different statutes dealing with the business improvement districts. It's a, it's a separate animal than the statutes that govern local government finances.
Yes.
And based on that, um, in order to put the tax levy on the businesses, um, the budget has to be approved by city council. Doesn't say you can have the right to amend it. You just either yes or no.
I, I guess what I'm saying in, in the bigger budget here.
Yes.
Would we potentially, if we did not approve that section, their portion, would we amend to pass this major piece of the budget minus that? Or does this have to be decided by November ninth?
The trick is you have to approve their levy by November ninth.
Okay.
That's probably most important.
That's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
You could probably, conceivably, they could probably defer action on the plan itself, not take any action, but approve separately the levy because, uh, as treasurer, council needs to give the treasurer direction to add that to the tax, add that levy to the tax bill. That's gotta be done.
Sure.
That, but yeah, so I mean, you're, you're splitting the hairs correctly on what, what separates. You don't have to approve their plan yet. Eventually you will because we'll have to settle that up. But we could do the, the tax, get that out of the way and by time, I suppose.
Our budget, the one that shows for the bid, has their fifteen thousand in it.
Correct.
So we don't need to do anything to our budget. It's their plan that we deny and then they need to come back with something that matches our budget. But our, our budget on, on transit and on bid both include the fifteen already.
But I think what I hear Jim saying is we need to decide.
Well, yeah, we do, but just in terms of approving or not, like our budget is our budget and we'll approve.
And I think the bid is coming back to you in October at the, at the next meeting? I believe so. They're gonna be coming, yeah, for next week's meeting.
Yeah.
They're gonna be submitting. They'll have it before the ninth.
Okay.
So I guess it's a council decision is kind of where we left it with the bid, whether.
Yeah.
We're in request at fifteen thousand or once you waive it, I think it's gone, so.
In terms of replacing that with additional revenue or, you know, just replacing it, uh, I can't even believe I'm floating the idea, but the overnight parking permits, parking stickers, especially the parking stickers in the downtown area, because that's really those users, parking stickers are only for the downtown parking lots if I, if I know correctly. I don't know how many users there are and I don't know the monthly charge. I don't know any of that, but I know what the annual, the annual is. If we were looking to, you know, move the funding source a little bit, what, you know, can you, in the next week or so advise us on what may be some, what we might look at in terms of fee increases to those that are using those parking lots right now? If that's a, if, council's got to find a way to find fifteen grand if we want to get it off. And it's either levy or it's user fees. That's, as with anything.
Yeah, we could look at that. Currently it's twenty dollars a month for a parking permit. And you're right, they're primarily the downtown lots. I mean, there's a couple that, you know, like on Oregon that may or may not be considered downtown, but it's twenty dollars wherever you use it.
And as I.
There was four paid parking in the downtown area. The parking stickers are for downtown parking. Those, it's just like going to a boat launch. I, you know?
Yes, and as I recall, there was some, um, they didn't want to lose any of the tenant paid parking that was under that same, um, cause that's, right now, there's reserved like on the four hundred, uh, east and the four hundred west, there's like a certain amount that's reserved for tenant parking.
Yeah, when we consolidated parking, we cut deals with people to purchase their property so we could make the parking lot as big as possible. So we bought land from you. We said, we'll give you a, a parking spot, Lori, or we'll give you two parking spots for your building or buildings. So those are contractually, we're contractually obligated to keep providing those. We can't take those away.
But those aren't paid, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Correct, you are, you are correct. They're not paid. They're basically.
But they could not be paid now because of that agreement?
Correct. Those are a handful of them. It's all the other ones.
Right, okay.
The ones that you do pay for, that monthly fee, which is what Jim's saying is twenty bucks a month.
So I guess if, you know, back to, um, council, uh, deputy mayor's points, if, you know, they want to remove that, um, then those businesses that are in the bid may also be dealing with, you know, some possible parking ticket complaints or costs associated.
Yeah, I can look at that and see what it would take. It's gonna be, I mean, I'm guess, I'm just doing some quick math. We're gonna have to raise that quite a bit to get to close to fifteen thousand, but.
If it's twenty, twenty bucks a month right now, it's probably more like twenty-eight, twenty-eight bucks a month right, to cover the fifteen.
It's twenty-five.
Doing some fast math, just on that one thing alone, if it was isolated to one change.
Yeah, cause the parking forfeitures aren't going to change much. So, yeah, you're probably looking at increasing it on a revenue of, um, about ninety-three thousand, maybe. So yeah, you're looking at at least a twenty-plus percent increase.
I did notice an interest in, um, so there's now a paid private parking lot that used to be, think lived this next to the Gibson Social Club. That, that was just, I think, within the last year that that.
Yeah, that's totally independent of us.
It's independent of us, but it could potentially be tangential because if we end up raising our rates, I don't know what their rates are. You know, are we ending up competing with that private paid parking lot? I don't know.
So what I'm hearing is you'd like to see what, make up that fifteen thousand, how much we would need to raise our parking permits. So it'd be basically, it'd be the month, it's listed as parking stickers, but basically that's monthly parking permits is what that is.
Do we know like who, what types of people these are, like who's using these stickers? Are they?
Yep, so there, we, I would look at that, which would also increase the, uh, revenue for the convention center north and Otter Street lot. So the convention center north and Otter Street lot, that's Winnebago County, basically, that purchases stalls for those two lots. And then the overnight parking sticker, or not the overnight, the monthly parking stickers slash permits, um, that is generally, it's business owners and or employees downtown. It'd be the vast majority. And then obviously there'd probably be a few tenants as well, but, um, that would be the majority of it. Because if you're coming to shop downtown, you're probably not buying a monthly permit. Well, somebody obviously that parks there every day. I would say the majority is, it would be going to, yeah, the business owners, their, their tenants and the county would be a big part of it. So we can do that, and then I don't know, Mr. Van Gompel, what do you, so if you're still good from your, we'll do that analysis and then we'll have to take that back.
I guess the only other observation I would share with council is, I think, I think you hit, saw a presentation at last meeting from the bidding district and they've gave you some rough, uh, financial numbers and their operations for 2020. And they still had revenue in excess of expenditures, which included their $15,000 contribution. I'm just saying, I'm not trying to take sides, but if you look at their oper, and I know they got different plans, and I know they're looking at doing beautification projects and those type of things. But if you look at their operations for 2020, they were able to make that payment and then had some money left over.
At least on paper, it doesn't look like it would prevent them from doing anything.
They could still do, I think it was about $40,000 over and above, uh, the expenditures are below their revenue, so they had like 40,000 to work with. Big overview, 10,000 foot, foot, uh, comment on, on the big picture, but again, uh, I didn't spend a whole lot of analysis on it, I just went off of their presentation.
Skeptical of the deputy mayor.
I'm not even saying I'm in, I'm not even saying I'm in favor of my own fee increase suggestion, I'm just, it is, it is a, it is an offset and, and quite honestly, and they're listening and, and I'll get a few emails and texts and phone calls. But the business owners and their employees are gonna be the ones who are gonna pay for this increase, so they're gonna take it off their, their tax bill and instead they're gonna pay for it out of their payroll check. That's the suggestion I just made, and not that I'm even in favor of that, but that is, that, that's an alternative solution. It's gonna come from somewhere and, and I don't know that the tax levy should support that personally.
If they, if they really wanted to increase their programming, they have the ability to self-impose their own tax. So if they do need a desire to have more money going towards beautification projects and other events happening downtown, they can certainly increase their own, the, the special charge back to them.
The self-imposed.
The self-imposed. So there's a mechanism for them to take on additional duties without impacting all of the taxpayers, it would just impact their assessment.
So, thank you.
My observations.
All right.
You laid it out, Jim.
All right.
That's all you can do.
All right, we have three more to go here, so these are a little more, we'll sign divisions on 221. Um, this one is, it's basically status quo, so there's not really much to talk about there. We, the sign division, um, we have Brian Greisbach, who's our, our transit maintenance manager in addition to managing the sign and street painting operation. So he wears a number of hats as well, uh, but there, they maintain all of the, um, traffic signs, street name signs in the city as well as do the street painting every year. So we have two full-time employees in that division and then we hire two seasonals every summer. Um, so anything else say in relation to that, and I know that, uh, uh, the finance director and Mr. Fitzpatrick are looking at is our, our seasonal wages are a little low. So we do have a hard time finding, just like the parks department, finding seasonal employees. We're fortunate that, um, they must like us enough that sometimes they come back for two years, but that's getting tougher and tougher to find them their first year. So, other than that, uh, there's nothing really um, out of the ordinary there, so are there, if there are any questions on the sign budget? All right, thanks, if there's not there, then we'll go to Scooter's two divisions. Uh, we have the, the street lighting fund, which would be the page 265, it's probably the easier of the two. Street lighting is basically status quo, there's a slight decrease in the expenses. Uh, the finance director felt based on our past experience that we could decrease that slightly, but basically the street lighting, all it is, is it's your electricity cost. That's basically your expense there. As far as labor goes, that's all handled in the electric budget. So. Well, that one's pretty status quo, there's nothing really notable there, and then the, um, are there any questions on that by street lighting at all?
Just, uh, the question I ask every year, how far along are we in our solar conversion?
Well, we've, we've, we've had a little back set on that, we had, we're still, I'm still on my, my docket to try and get that done, but with COVID and supplies and everyone's heard that you can't get chips, you can't get, the, it's kind of in a holding pattern, we are still moving forward with our first, um, development at, um, sub, um, out on 9th Street, there's a development going in that we're gonna be installing, solar street lighting in cooper, you know, cooperation with the, the actual developer. That's still moving forward, it's probably a year out yet, but we, we aren't, we look at it when it's in and, you know, it's still kinda got pushed back a little bit now, so.
That is on Scooter's goals for next year, so.
It has been, it's just, with all the other things that go on, again, I, we wear a lot of different hats with only a, you know, the four person department. You know, especially this year, there's been a lot, where I've actually had been in the office, I've been on working with the guys, so, um, you know, we're just, we're, we're far behind in a lot of projects, so.
I mean, otherwise we could have the developers build into their project costs those little, um, bicycles where folks have to get on and, you know.
Pedal.
Generate their own.
He could try that, I don't know, I don't know how receptive they'd be to that, but it's still, you know, it's still there and not every, not every location is, is well-suited for solar. Obviously we have to look at, you know, we have a couple of other things going on, we, we have a tree campaign that we plant trees, so, you know, and that's gonna affect, you know, how long a solar light will light. They have to play games with the solar, solar, uh, lighting because there isn't enough charge time in the winter time for us to effectively keep those lit, you know, all night long. So, um, there's, there's still some challenges for being up here in the north, so I do have different, um, I've been working with three or four different vendors on trying to come up with something that we could get installed to, you know, as a demo. But again, it, it's kinda hard because they don't just, you know, they don't just loan you those things to put in, so we, we have to buy them, but then it gets into purchasing rules and, and a lot of other things, so. Um, it's not, it seems real easy to just go get some and put them in and try them, but on the flip side, it's not quite that easy, so. But we're still moving that way, I, I can't tell you exactly how long it's gonna be, but we are, we are definitely gonna be having the one development for sure.
And then the, um, since Scooter, Scooter already kind of transitioned a little bit, the electric budget then's on page 215. Um, the electric budget, um, I think all of you that are here know, uh, but, so electric division, like we talked about, takes care of all the city-owned traffic signals, street lights. Um, we also do the layouts of street lights for new roads, maintain the city's fiber optic network, work on the electric work for all the city's buildings and divisions. Um, and they do special projects like they did, uh, the electrical for the police department remodel this last year. Um, really the only revenue in that department is for when we have knockdowns and we can bill an insurance company or somebody that did the damage. And our expenses are status quo, other than, you know, a little bit of increased personnel costs. Like Scooter said, our, our electrical division is basically him, and then we have four electricians, so that's the whole department. And I think in general, we get a lot of bang for the buck, like I said, they basically, I can't think of any city department that, uh, that the electric division hasn't helped at some point in time, so.
It, it is getting harder and harder every year to try and keep the budget status quo, by the way, also, it's just, the, the, the material cost that we incur is, is increasing dramatically. I've any, I, I, I've kind of known it as, I salvage a lot of things and if we can reuse it, we'll reuse it. Um, but we're getting to the point, we're getting down on, uh, on some items that we're gonna have to start purchasing again, that I haven't had to purchase for, um, quite a few years, like, uh, traffic signals themselves. Um, with all the roundabouts that, you know, 10 years ago, we had a lot of excess material that we were able to not have to buy those type of things for many years where, uh, this next year, I'll probably have to start buying some of those things where I was able to keep the cost down. But, um, just the, you know, everyone looks at a traffic signal pole, but I mean, that, just that pole, we're probably about a 45% increase of cost on, on that equipment now. And we've been able to absorb it in the, in the status quo budget, but at some point, we're gonna end up having to increase that to, uh, you know, to make sure we have enough inventory, uh, you know, for knockdowns or installations of new, you know, new, so.
And then the, the two projects I just, I, since this is gonna be coming up the next council meeting, it'll highlight, and, um, I commend Scooter and his staff for this, is we did install the R, RFBs, the rectangular rapidly flashing beacons, uh, at the roundabout on Washburn, um, and 9th last year. The county is going to be donating us money to, it's on the next council meeting for approval for, uh, the same flashers at 9th and Kohler. And Scooter did the, and his team did the layout and installation, so that was kind of our in-kind contribution. But, uh, there's a lot of work that goes into things like that, and then additionally on Jackson Street, they did, um, the speed feedback signs, all the layout and installed those as well. So doing that stuff in-house saves us a lot of money because we don't have to hire an engineer to do the layout, then you have to hire another contractor to do the installation, you have to have somebody to oversee it. So there's projects like that, that, uh, that we're able to get done with the electrical division, um, as well as, like I said, they've done a lot of work at the museum, the police department, and so I think overall, we're doing pretty well.
Not a whole lot of idle time in our, our department, so.
Were there any questions on electric? No, I think you guys are right on schedule.
Oh yeah, we are.
The only thing to maybe caution is, uh, the way, the indications looking right now that our natural gas increases, which in electric rates will, this year they could, I mean, we, we did budget, uh, what public service gave us the projected rate increase, but, uh, the way it looks is there, there's a possibility that they may be exceeding that, what they gave us, so we'll have to kinda watch that, but that's, it's kinda moving that way right now, natural gas prices are up, so.
Everything I'm reading, you're, yeah, it's gonna happen.
And, and we don't really control that, it's just one of those things, we may have to figure out how we.
We just brace ourselves.
How we do it, you know?
Other than that, thanks for your support, and if you have any questions, you can contact me, Scooter, Steve or Brian, and happy to answer any questions, we'll look into those couple of things you mentioned and get back to you.
I could just ask, um, one other kind of side question here, um, that is that, um, on the hybrid buses, going back to transit, how many do we have now?
We have four.
What is the usage of those hybrids, like, do we have any kind of general idea of what that saved us and not just fuel costs, but the GHD emissions, are we capturing that?
We do not, however, I can give you anecdotal information.
Yeah.
The, the, the thing though, I will say though, that, um, our current hybrids are 2010s and the technology's gotten so much better on the clean diesel buses, that I would, we, I, I do monitor our MPG's or miles per gallon and things like that, and our, so our 2019 clean diesel buses get better miles per gallon than our 2010 hybrids, and I would argue that their emissions are cleaner. Because the technology's improved so much with the diesel engines and they have, um, basically a, a, a system where the exhaust goes through cleaners before it's admitted out into the air. So that, that's, in the last few years, that technology's improved so much. So it will be interesting, like next year, we'll get to 2022, where we're getting a, a couple hybrids, to see how those compare to the ones we got in 2010, because just during that 12 years, that technology has changed so much. And that's what's happening right now with the electrical buses, we're just on the infancy of that, there's some systems that are getting them now, there's a lot of bugs and issues that are being worked through. But I think, you know, where the hybrids were in 2010 is kinda where the electrical buses are now, they cost twice as much. Fortunately, when we bought those in 2010, we got a grant that paid 100%, but, uh, now I can get two clean diesel buses for the price of one electric bus, not to mention the infrastructure that goes into it and the increased maintenance and all those things. So, um, it, it'll be interesting to see how that goes forward, but there are, I, I do have studies that compare the different types of, um, transmissions, whether it be hybrid or clean diesel or, um, CNG. There are a lot of studies on that, and I will say that it depends.
We've actually seen, we've actually seen some systems, just to jump in there, we've actually seen some systems with their hybrid or their electric buses, they've actually had to go to put generators, gasoline generators on their, you know, buses, whether it be on top or somehow fit them in there, because some of the systems don't operate the way they're supposed to on, on the whole thing, so we have seen a few places that are doing that.
Yeah, with the electric buses, a lot of them have to, they have to install auxiliary heaters because there's not enough electricity being generated to heat the inside of the bus. So I was in Missoula, Montana for a conference this summer and I asked, they had a hybrid, and I asked them what they're, they said, well, yeah, it does get cold in the winter, you might have to wear a coat. And then, uh, I was in Duluth and I asked them, and Duluth said, well, we run diesel auxiliary heaters, so defeats some of the purpose, but anyway, that's, that technology's out there.
Yeah, and you might not need as many diesel mechanics if you're converting over, but you'll need the folks that can work on the electrical vehicles.
All their mechanics have to go through training on high voltage systems and it's, there, I won't get into all of the details, but there's a lot of issues. For instance, now you gotta hire roof, so you gotta adjust the height of your garage to get it into the garage and the lifts to work on the buses, so they've, I, it was, when I talked to Missoula, they said, they gave me a list of about 10 things they didn't think of that were problems once they got them.
So we'll let them figure those things out first?
Yes, that's, that's the plan.
There you go.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scooter. Thank, thanks Steve for us too.
Yep.
You get out of here quick.
Oh yeah, he was, he was.
He hightailed it out of here.
I can't believe he didn't, well, I was probably lying, so I don't sit here and talk all day.
See you guys, thank you. Well, we got some snacks inside there, if you wanna get something for the home, home stretch.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org, and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
Russ's budget is getting docked. We haven't cut anybody yet.
Not on this.
You know?
You can have it.
Let's see what, I said two more budgets? Ah, let's see, this will be the last one, Mark.
Right.
Oh, heck.
We got, we got still get Matt. All right, he's back.
Hey, Fanny, you didn't bring enough cookies for everybody?
Nope. Camera's on her, I tell you what I really think.
Yeah.
Big plate back there.
Yep.
All righty, Russ.
Ready?
I think the mirror's just fetching her light.
That's fine.
Yes.
Um, there's nothing to see here. No, financial budget is on page 93, which is the primary one for our operations and accounting. Just to kind of give you a fresh overview, you know, we take care of recording all of the transactions within the city. We manage the cash and investments for the city. We look at the borrowings and execute, and, and work with our outside financial consultant on borrowings. And we also take care of the utility billings. And then we do internal and external customers, dealing with some other issues, including parking and those type of things. So that's our mission. Our goals was to reduce the general obligation debt, and we've kind of been fairly successful in managing our debt. The second strategic goal, we did talk at Long Range Finance, and we actually have postponed looking at doing a biannual budget. So we're basically doing it on an annual basis, but we do apply the strategic plan to it. And part of our enhancements this year, we did go to the digital budget book, so that the public can have a better understanding of where the budget's at, and do some research on their own. We continue to implement various phases of the Enterprise Resource Platform. This past year, we've worked on executime, I think we talked about that. We're talking about the fixed asset map module, and working on that. And we also helped out HR in the review of health insurance options, and the funding of those. So our key performance indicators, some of these were created before I got here, but I'm not real crazy about the first one, because the quarterly cycle for expenditures within the general fund is pretty standard. It's pretty much expenditures occur on a monthly basis, so it's kind of almost follows, so each quarter kind of follows a one-fourth of the annual appropriation. And you can see, you know, from the first to the fourth quarter, how that looks for the last two years, and then for 2021. We also list out the amount of invoices we process for the city, and that's listed on invoices paid, and then we also give you a report on the number of receipts that have been processed. And we also track the number of utility billing calls that we had. And if you look back at quarter two and quarter three, that's the time when we converted from quarterly to monthly, so we had a lot more calls coming in during that process. So that's, in a nutshell, basically what we have, there's really not a whole lot of change, other than personnel and insurance. So I'm not sure if there's any questions on the finance side of things.
Yeah, Russ, billing, water billing electronically, how are we doing there?
You mean about sending out emails on the bills?
Yeah, and emailing, and then maybe just ACH, automatic, automatic payments and things.
Yeah, the billing is done through the module, through Tyler, but the customers do have an option to get that electronic right now, and they do have the option of doing automatic payments, automatic withdrawals out of their account. One of the ideas that I'm researching right now is whether or not it would make sense to look at new customers, and maybe start out small, and just say, all new accounts have to be.
Right.
Email, or have to be automatic withdrawal setups, to help minimize our costs on sending out bills, and minimize our collection time.
Correct me if I'm wrong, just water billing, it costs us about $200,000 bucks a year right now?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I'd really like to see that ACH and electronic.
Well, we have a number of people that do ACH right now. It's just, I wish the percentage is high, we try to promote that.
Is it legal for us to charge a dollar extra if they're not doing it?
Right now, under the Public Service Commissions, I don't think so. We have to research that a little bit more. They do have, you know, again, the water utility is regulated through the Public Service Commission, and they say, have to approve our rates, and they have to also approve our operating procedures, and there's a whole operating manual, or set of guidelines, which includes, you know, when you turn off water, well, how much you can charge if they're delinquent, and all those things. And that's all regulate, it's a regulated industry.
Yeah, the only reason I push for this is it's, it's $200,000 of low-hanging fruit. And don't, don't think for two seconds I don't understand that it's, it's complicated when it comes to billing issues, but there's $200,000 there of low-hanging fruit, which we could use, obviously, in other places. So that, that's why I keep pushing for it.
No, that's, that's a good idea, but, you know, again, we're serving a wide variety of customers, from people that are just starting out in either rental, or homeowners, and maybe a younger generation versus older generation. We see a lot more trends coming online. We see more people doing that. That's why I think if we started out and, and required the electronic, or the emailing of bills with new customers, or maybe the automatic withdrawal, that, that might not have as big of a pushback. And I'd still have to kind of do some research on the legality, or the permissibility of that. So it's nothing that I haven't thought about before, but it's just how do you do that transition? And, you know, maybe a good pilot program would be to require new customers to do that.
Sure. Yeah, I don't want to force your hand in any one direction, but it's just, it's something that is always on my mind.
I understand.
A few years ago, we talked with Community Development, they, they were doing the management and the accounting for the TIF, all of our TIF transactions. And I thought that had transitioned over to finance, and I guess now I'm wondering if that happened, since, since we do say that all records and transactions go through your office, but it seems like maybe that's not quite happening?
Well, as with all of our transactions, you know, we work with the departments, whether it's community development, police, fire, parks, whatever. And we try to get it, the users involved as much as possible. When we look at the analysis on the tax increment districts, quite honestly, some of the things that are happening on the ground, Community Development is a little bit more aware of, as far as what type of improvements may come on and when, because the timing of those improvements coming online will help us do the analysis of when to expect the increment to come in. So we work quite closely with Community Development when we're preparing the TIF schedules, and trying to estimate, you know, where we're at on, on various, not necessarily balances, but forward-looking as far as increments that could be coming in.
So are all of the transactions under those TIFs going through finance?
Oh, yeah. It's all done, all, all of our receipts and all of our disbursements are all handled through this Munis or Tyler Technologies platform. And our payroll records now, the data entry is also being done. Up until this year, we were doing manual entries for a lot of departments.
Right.
But now that's all automated, and, and we're doing all the payroll processing for this city as well.
Yeah, now that our, our former grants coordinator has left, and Ms. Nyforth has taken over as director, she wants to make sure she understands everything as best as she can. She's been working very closely with finance to, to get all that going, so that finance does a little more. I would say, a year ago, your question would have been met with a little bit of antsy-ness and not answering it, but I think Kelly and Jennifer have really been working well together. And then Emily, the new grants coordinator, doesn't have any old knowledge to bias her in any one way, so she's like, sure, I'll do whatever. And so I think it's improving a whole bunch.
Yeah. So right behind finance is another segment, which is just taxes and interest, and that's pretty much a, more of a revenue-type category, but there are some expenditures to it. Inside of that, we're just, that's where we account for the general fund, it's on page 98, I'm sorry. So you can kind of just flip the page over. That's where we account for the revenue from taxes, and taxes is margin than just property taxes. I get this question quite a bit. We also have mobile home taxes, payment in lieu of tax, and, and we kind of skipped over that this morning. The payment in lieu of tax is regulated, again, through the Public Service Commission. Historically, the city has, or the water utility has paid the city $1 million. Based on my history, and based on looking at the public service rules, what we really should be doing is taking the, the book value, or the asset value of the water utility, and multiplying it by the, the local tax rate, the, the city and, and school district tax rate. So I went through and calculated that payment in lieu of tax for the first time, other than just using what has been done in the past, and they just had that flat dollar amount. So the $1,542,600 is the amount that's due based on the, just the, our city tax rate, doesn't include school, but we can do the school. But I kind of did a stepped-up approach, and just did the, the city tax rate on that calculation, times the book value. So the water utility makes that expense, and the payers pay for, the rate payers pay for that. And that's the, the pay a tax equivalent for their assets, just like a house would pay taxes, the utility then would pay a tax. I looked at whether or not we could do that by, for the other utilities, namely, the wastewater sewer fund, and the stormwater fund. There's some conflicting reports right now. The legal Wisconsin municipalities, in their information, say that it's not permissible, based on a court case that happened 20 years ago in Fond du Lac. But I'm telling you, I, in my conference call with other finance directors, there's other communities in Wisconsin right now that are doing the payment in lieu of tax from a sewer utility, even though it may or may not be permissible. I did not put that in the budget for this year, it's something I still want to look at. It's kind of one of those tools that we could look at to minimize our impact on property taxes, and have the right pair. and have the rate payer support it. But there's nothing in the budget this year for, from sanitary sewer wastewater utility, nor is there anything from the stormwater utility in this.
So this is a tax on the assets, but isn't there another tax that's on the bill for the?
Not a tax. I always get defensive when you start talking about taxes and fees and those type of things because there's a difference.
I'm sorry, the payment in lieu of tax is actually a tax.
But then there's also on the water bill for public fire protection. It's called hydrant rental. And it's a payment from the taxpayers through this special charge for the cost of providing water supply system or the size of the water main is not only put in place to serve water customers, it's also put in place to help provide fire protection. And that fire protection charge at one point was part of the levy. We took it out of our levy a number of years ago. And now if you take it out of the levy and use a special charge, you actually have to decrease your tax levy because they've done some state statutes that there are like five or six different charges that if you implement them now, today, you would have to reduce your levy for the levy limit calculation. But we did it prior to the legislation.
You're going to kill me because I ask you this question every year. Where's the rest of your salary? Where's the other 75% of it? And I know you tell me this every year and every year I forget.
Yeah, a lot of our salaries are allocated into other areas. It's not that we're trying to hide any things, but it represents a true picture. So my salary, most of it gets, is it in the finance budget? About 70 or 50% or 60%?
25% finance.
Oh, okay, well, it's even lower than that.
Yeah.
25% in each of the utilities, water, sewer, store.
All right, and then I just have one more question. It's curiosity or it's a typo, account clerk 2, 2.05, is that just a typo?
Nope. We assign our cashiers, our account clerks to different areas. I was going to mention this when we were talking about the parking utility. We used to have one dedicated person for parking utility. Now it's allocated with, in between all the people in our office. So that if you look at the account, the parking utility, the full time equivalent is now 0.96 instead of 1 because it gets allocated. Some of our cashier's times are also allocated out to utilities. That's why when we were talking about the transportation utility, I said most of that shifting would come from utilities between other utilities and the new transportation utilities. Basically, instead of allocating our staff over three utilities, you'd be allocating them over four.
Gotcha. Thanks, Russ, and I'm sorry I keep forgetting.
No, no, that's okay, those are all good questions.
So a half million dollars to the water utility that wasn't previously budgeted for, what's that going to do to the rate, for the rate pairs?
It'll, it'll impact the repairs. And where we're at, and I thought that question was going to come up this morning too, on the water rates, we are in a holding pattern on doing a formal application to Public Service Commission for the reason that we're still trying to figure out exactly the direction council wants to go and the Public Service Commission is willing to accept on this Clearwell project. It's kind of a chicken and egg thing. We need construction authorization from the Public Service Commission to go ahead. And that would have an impact on our rate analysis. So we're waiting on the rate analysis. And I know the mayor has been asking about lifeline rates and those type of things. My understanding is we didn't want to do a separate rate case just for the lifeline rates, that we were going to roll that into one application with the Clearwell project. So that's on a holding pattern. So we haven't done that yet for the water utility. They have some pretty healthy reserves. On the sewer utility, we are in the process of working with elders and associates as we've done in all the years that I've been here to look at our sewer rate charges and whether or not those have to be adjusted. So we're in the process of looking at that as well.
That was a good answer, but it wasn't answered to my question.
Delayed reaction.
It's basically, yeah.
It'll be yes.
I mean, what, a half million dollars to the?
I don't know what it means to the rate payer right now. Right now, it means they will have less earnings at the end of the year.
Okay, and the lifeline thing, I just want to be really clear, that was never a decided thing. That was a idea that as part of the whole case, that is not included in the case because council has not given that direction.
Correct. We've never gotten the information yet to even say.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I want to remind everybody, I'm very, I'm very, very familiar with the Public Service Commission. Not that I'm smart or anything, it's just I deal with them. They have one speed and it's reversed. They're great people, but it's, it is just typical bureaucracy. Like I said, they're great, great people, but it moves at a snail's pace down there. And it's not your typical process that you would see out of any other form of government. So, and they have ultimate authority over this stuff, so. And they never want to punt the ball down the field, so.
And isn't my understanding, based on the presentation last week about the Clearwell project, that there's still, or maybe someone else was describing this, there's still between the DNR and the PSC, this decision about the pump size in between?
You know, that's not my area of expertise. All I know is that if we want to include the Clearwell project in a rate analysis, we have to have the authorization on the construction process done first. And I'm not aware, again, that would probably be Public Works' area of expertise of any difficulties between the two agencies. But as it relates to the water rates and water billing, we, I think, need a clear, we need permission to do the construction, which would then help us frame the cost impact.
Yeah, and I would say, don't hold your breath because they fought us on being able to add the new water tower to our rates until the project was done. We borrowed it and then they delayed us. We were delayed like a year and a half on doing the water tower. And we were prevented from adding that because in their eyes, it wasn't added to our asset base yet. So if it's not part of your asset base, you can't argue that it's part of your?
Cost structure.
Cost structure, yeah. So that's.
You put in the interduct one year, you put the fiber in the next year, we go through those same battles.
But unless it's turned on and being?
Unless it's lit, you get no credit for it, so.
Keep plugging away. What it does is it adds a half million in operating costs to, you know, the, if you take a look at all our utility bills or you just take a look at water, water's about 15. So it's a couple percent.
But we will be able to recoup that down the road. I mean, I want everybody at home to understand that, so it's not.
But I, you know, it goes into the speech I normally give and then Russ backs me up on it, our overreliance on property taxes. And we were trying to figure out a way to not overrely on property taxes. And this was one way to do it.
Absolutely.
So on page 99, there's just some other little charges for like weed cutting and snow removal and interest on taxes that are in that section. I don't know if there's any questions on those.
Why would you have weed cutting and snow removal for the finance department?
Oh, I don't know, because that's the department it gets assigned to.
We send the bills out.
It gets assigned to.
To be honest with you, Mayor?
Shouldn't be streets, it shouldn't be parks, it shouldn't be a whole lot of ones.
It's got to go somewhere, I guess.
This is the first organization that has signed its revenue to department areas. Usually in my other, in my other communities, it was just all general fund revenue. And it didn't matter if it came from Public Works or police or?
I beg to differ, Russ, and you and I differ very seldom. But I want, I think it's nice from one standpoint where you look at revenue versus your OpEx. And I like to see those comparisons. I mean, to me, it just, a lot of times if you have a general fund and everything goes in the general fund, you don't see who the culprits are taking the money out, so.
Yeah, but to the mayor's, again, I understand, but to the mayor's point, why is we kind of cutting assigned to finance? I don't know.
I don't know why that is. Normally, that wouldn't be the case. This is a relatively new phenomenon with Munis and everything, so. Could that go over to another department, probably? But I own, that's an old Long Beach, California thing from 1987, folks.
Well, it kind of parallels the enterprise funds, right?
Yes.
The other thing that's missing from this, I mean, this is obviously an adjustment. Like I said, I was just kind of getting to know my way around the former format. But one of the things that I did miss in this was, and perhaps this happened at a previous meeting, we had the per capita cost for like public safety, fire, police and, I don't know, it was like a half a dozen items. And then it compared to other communities.
Your pie chart that you put on the tax bill.
Yes.
Yep, two things on that, real quickly. First of all, that information was an oversight. I probably should have put it in the budget, but I do have it. It actually comes from the Public Policy Forum.
Okay.
Which is now expanded to statewide and I have those numbers. And then the second point that I was going to raise earlier today when we were talking about key performance indicators is working with the city manager and trying to expand our key performance indicators that include some benchmarking with other cities. Because I think the question came up, you know, how does this rate, you know, what's going on in other communities? And I think those are all legitimate questions. It's just that, and this digital budget book that we have has the ability to incorporate some of those benchmarking tools. We just can't do it all overnight. And I want to work on that and could probably list that as a goal as we move forward. I think early on, you heard from the city manager, you know, we're trying to prepare a budget so that we can present the information to the public and to you as elected officials in a way that's recognized by our peer group, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. They have two main awards. One is for budget presentations, distinguished budget presentations. I'm anticipating that with this product and with this format, that we will be submitting that. And then the next one is our financial reporting mechanism, our comprehensive annual financial report, which just shows, just like with the police department and their accreditation, it shows that we're meeting standards from our, from our peer groups that we're representing fairly and transparently our use of the resources that they entrust on us by us giving them, you know, giving the property owners a tax bill on and where it gets spent. So those are all good points. I can get you that, I can get you that information, but it's not in this book. I can get that sent out.
Oh, I could probably find it if it's out on the Public Policy Forum.
It's on the Public Policy Forum website.
Because I'm probably the only person who?
And there's a comparison of Oshkosh to the other similar sized communities, the same ones that we've looked at before.
Councilmember Erickson had a somewhat similar question about some of the measures and everything. And I think a lot of it's the adjustment. We still have a lot more to show you.
And the fact that these KPIs that we started like three years ago are the exact same ones, that they haven't changed and we've talked about that. So not on you just saying it hasn't changed. And I know, you know, there's the whole benchmarking discussion and that, but it just seems odd that how are we measuring? Like, the police department was a good example, right, in their annual report as well as the fire department. They've got some real specific, performance oriented measures that are coming out in their annual report, but yet they might not necessarily be here. Are those department entered or is it on you guys to have to put that in?
Right now, there's a coordination of effort from the departments into HR and Mark's office. And then we're able to pull that information and include it into the budget document.
I see, so they're not having to directly put it in.
That's one of the nice things. And I know, Mayor, you made some comment about the fonts. There are still some components of this budget where we are taking documents out of Munis and we do ourselves, do our own little, we call them cubes, reports. And when those get inserted into this, the font sometimes gets a little small or funky. I don't know how else to say it, but it gets, it gets really small. And I just want to give a quick shout out, you know, Paula's been here the last two days. Paula has worked tirelessly on incorporating our financial information through Tyler, through Munis into this platform. And we had a number of issues in getting the two platforms to communicate in a way we wanted to, including, you know, just simple things like line items and object codes and department codes and layouts and almost every component of this probably had to be tweaked a little bit at some point along the line. It's now in play and I'm really happy and proud that we've gotten this far. But there's more that we need to do.
Thank you, Russ. I mean, no, it's obvious, I'm thinking back, since I've been involved, I think as a citizen on long range finance, each subsequent budget has gotten more readable, more transparent. I think more, design more with the consumer of the information in mind. And that's just clear and get that it's a process, but well done, keeps getting better.
I think that's more of your staff than you.
Obviously.
They carry you like a wounded, like a wounded critter. All kidding aside, seriously, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with more with Mike. That this gets better, more detailed, easier for us to understand, which also means the citizens can more easily understand this, which is the most important.
I mean, it doesn't make any sense to have it all in government speak. I mean, you really got to, and one of the things I try to do is lay things out so that you don't need an accounting degree to understand what I'm trying to explain. Maybe I don't do it as well as I once did, but I can do it good once. So page 101 is some other revenues. Again, it's allocating some of the other things that are coming within the general fund. We use the 1000073. And it includes things like the shared taxes from the state. And you've heard that from the city manager and from myself. And how much we're not getting from the state of Wisconsin and how the payment for municipal services is remaining somewhat flat. No, we don't have the transportation aids in this one.
No, that's in Public Works.
So that's there, interest on investments there, you know, miscellaneous sale, capital assets and those other things. So that's all in our?
Russ, my, another annual favorite question is, do you ever see state money coming back? I mean, is this just, the shared revenue, is that ever, ever going to come back?
No.
Okay. You want me to stop asking?
You can ask all you want. I just said, I've been, I've been in the business for, you know, almost 30 years and 20 some years in the state of Wisconsin, and I know what it's like. But the one that gets me probably more than anything else, and we've made this presentation to council before, is the payment for municipal services in which communities that have state owned property are getting hosed. Getting hosed because they're paying 30 cents on the dollar. And that's just not fair. I don't know how else to say it. They expect us to provide municipal services to state owned property. And it's not just the university, it's, it's the prison, it's other property owned by the state. And every other taxpayer has to pay based on their valuation except the state of Wisconsin.
And there's no such thing as like a payment in lieu of taxes for like a prison or a?
Well, that's essentially what this program was intended to be. It was supposed to be based on?
And it was at 100% at one time and it was then at 80% at one time, it was 70%. And then based on appropriations from the state of Wisconsin, it's down to 30 cents. Actually, Professor Ford or Councilmember Ford would know a little bit more about shared revenue. Shared revenue, when it was started in 1930, was actually implemented when the state did the income tax. And the whole idea was to share the taxes collected. And it was based on the tax collected within your area. It was a return to origins was the basis for it. It was return to origins was the basis for it, and they went from the return to origins basis to a needs basis, and then it went to an appropriation basis. It's been the most goofiest formula, uh, that, that, that started out in a simple manner of getting property tax relief. And we, it's no longer property tax relief, it's really a drain on, on our ability to provide services to our local residents. I'm sorry to be so passionate about it.
And it's somewhat cynical because of, you know, you asked the question, you know, what do you think the likelihood is? We haven't seen a change in the shared revenue program or the, the payment for municipal services program. We haven't seen a change in twenty years. Literally, zero percent change for twenty years or a reduction, or a reduction. And it's with both, both parties. This is not a single party thing. Uh, the league has asked me to, to be part of a group with the towns and the counties, and they've asked if Russ can be lurking in the shadows with us to take a look at, to take a look at what can we do to just redo this, and we gotta get the counties and the towns. Cause if the cities just go by themselves, then the towns are just gonna, and the counties are just gonna thwart us, and then we thwart them, and we gotta go in with a unified approach, but the real issue is, is we are not an agrarian property tax based economy anymore, and we haven't been for, you know, probably, you know, sixty years. And we gotta get out of this, and is it, is it sales based, service based? I mean, we're a service based economy now. How do you tax in an agrarian economy when you're, when you're in a service based economy? It's just totally different. Everybody hates property taxes, including us.
That's the whole thing with personal property. Personal property was a way of measuring one's wealth.
Don't get me started.
I mean, it was actually a tax based on the livestock you, you had, and your, your, all your equipment. And then they slowly whittled it, uh, what it applied to, down, and down, and down, until it's like, almost become a joke.
And then the honest people get punished because there are people who try to game the system and others who dutifully pay their, their personal property tax. So, we could go on, but it, it, we do have one more account to get to in Russ's, and he's already taken seven minutes of mine, so.
It was planned that way, Mark.
Unclassified, Russ?
Oh, unclassified. Oh, yeah, we, um, that's on page two twenty-eight.
You probably just flip right to two twenty-nine.
Two twenty-nine is the numbers. Um, so, in the pay area, um, I just wanna note that last year when we did, uh, the budget, we did not, uh, and we did not want to account for pay increases within each individual department because we were in the middle of negotiations, so we, we put all of the adjustments that we needed for negotiated contracts with the representative, uh, bargaining units into, uh, sixty-two forty-nine. But this year, because we're on multiple year contracts, we know what those increases are, and those are rolled within the department. Uh, the regular pay is sixty-one oh two. Um, the city manager does have a, um, a performance uh, uh, component of a compensation plan, uh, paid for performance, and it also includes the amount we need to, to do payouts. So, for example, um, the city clerk is retiring. Uh, we don't put her payout in her operating budget. We, we put the payouts for all the departments into here because we kinda know in total what that number may be, and that we don't wanna overinflate for one particular year when somebody retires like the director of community development, or the city clerk, or the museum director. We put that all together in the unclassified section. Um, unemployment, again, we're a little bit different than a business. We only pay unemployment when somebody files a claim. Um, so, um, we don't get dinged as much. Um, let's see, we have some, uh, employee benefit fees, and I think that's pretty much for three waves, if I remember right. Um, and then we have some other operating expenses that are not allocated to specific departments, um, including some bank fees and contingency and some other things in there.
Why is the contingency up so much?
Well, part of it is, um, I wanted to have a little bit more cushion this year with the health insurance. You remember the discussion we had with health insurance, and we, actually, when we did the preliminary budgets, we said, it's gonna be like a twenty-seven percent increase, and we worked with them, and we did by going self-insurance, we estimated it would only be a twelve percent hit. To be honest with you, I'm not real comfortable that that's where it's actually gonna end up, even though, you know, we, we are now self-insured. So I wanted to build a little bit higher contingency this year in moving forward, so that's why I plugged that, uh, plugged that in a little bit higher than in the past.
And it's rather than putting it in all the departments, we got it in one place, so if, if police needs it and Public Works doesn't, you know, then we can allocate it there, so it, it doesn't, it doesn't add.
In the past, um, we would do a calculation based on historical trends of what people spent, but then we said, if the finance director leaves and instead of him having family coverage, we only need single coverage, we would always still plan for family coverage. So if you bring in a new finance director and you only need single coverage, it's, it's a difference, or vice versa. If, um, somebody was not on insurance at all, and all of a sudden that position changed over, we automatically assumed any change in the position was gonna be family coverage, so we defaulted to the more conservative approach to budgeting. I did not do that. I budgeted based on historical trends and based on the twelve percent. So I needed a little bit more cushion.
We cushioned it here rather than in the department. It's just a, a judgment call. So that's the big bump there. So that, the unclassified, that's sort of place where we put a lot of that. At the end of the, uh, the budget process before you adopt it, we'll take a strong look at expenditure restraint and making sure we get up to the maximum allowable, and we might tweak the contingency or something like that to, to get us right up to the maximum limit.
Right now, I anticipate we do have flexibility still underneath the expenditure restraint program that we still have room. So it depends on what you do with budget enhancements and where that might end up.
So we wait until you're all done with that, and then we'll balance it out for, for purposes of getting ourselves up to the.
Maximizing that limit.
Yes.
Right, so that in twenty-three, I mean, we're always thinking ahead to the following year.
We're not handcuffing ourselves for future years.
Right, that's pretty much it.
Can you remind us, um, typically when we're at the point where we're looking at those enhancements, there's usually a dollar figure that we kinda have an estimated usage. And I think it was mentioned earlier on, maybe yesterday, and I didn't quite grab that.
I was gonna get into that.
Okay.
For Q and A and closeout, if you could just hang on to that question, cause it's totally, totally relevant.
And before you do that, I still, there's one more area that I wanted to address.
Oh, you?
Yes. Um, I'd like to turn your, uh, budget books to page three sixty, please, which is basically the, uh, levy for the Equipment Replacement Fund.
Okay.
I think, uh, council needs to understand, when we did the CIP, um, CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, we had identified a potential of up to, uh, one point five million dollars of projects that could be funded by levy. Uh, in my early calculations, I was working on a levy of one point five, um, but that did, uh, a quite a bit of a bite on the tax rate. So the city manager, myself, said we can only really live with a million one. So you see the tax levy a million one, and that's consistent with other years. So what I'm trying to tell you is, there's four hundred thousand dollars that we had, had identified in our Capital Improvement Plan for levy, things that would be financed by levy, that's not in the levy. So we have to either postpone those projects or prioritize our projects, or again, add them to the list for potential ARPA consideration. It would be all one time expenditures. I don't have that list, that four hundred thousand dollar list to give you like right now, but I wanted to call to your attention the fact that initially in the plan, we were looking at one point five million dollars in, in projects, and we're only able to fund one point one, based on where we're at with the levy right now. So, uh, our recommendation is you would consider four hundred thousand dollars of, of those projects that were in the levy dollars to be funded by ARPA.
There is a significant chunk of contingency in the CIP though, too, that could be reallocated either in whole or, or, or small.
Some of these projects, quite honestly, when I looked at it, the difficulty is, some of these that were identified to be funded by levy, I don't know if you want to borrow for because of their lifespan, and, and, you know, for example, um, garbage trucks, you know, they last three to five years, and I don't think you wanna do a ten year financing on it, for example. I'm just pulling that as an example, but there's other projects that, we have to be careful of what we put into the, the potential borrowing. I'd feel more comfortable if we came back to borrowing, instead of borrowing twenty million, we only borrowed nineteen and a half a million dollars, or nineteen million dollars because of that contingency, than to try to force levy dollars into the borrowing.
Russ is another option, looking at that fund balance as well?
Yep, absolutely.
So there's another.
Well, are you talking about the general fund?
That, that excess fund balance.
Yes, yeah.
But I wanna, again, we've kinda talked about being somewhat judicious about the general fund balance because we're looking at that to be that, the funding source for the revaluation, which is, is gonna be on the horizon. So I'd rather not draw that down too far right now.
I, I agree, but do we have a bead on where we think the reevaluation is gonna put us in terms of new revenue?
Uh, yes. Typically.
You gotta, you gotta swag?
No, because, let me, let me just, cause I, I think there's a, a lot of people that have misnomer about that. Now, a property that's, uh, has a market value, and I'm, I'm gonna just use a hundred thousand dollars cause it's easy for everybody to follow along. That hundred thousand dollar property is still gonna be worth a hundred thousand dollars either before the revaluation or after the revaluation. All it says is, instead of having it on the books, assessed valuation at eighty-eight thousand dollars or eighty-three thousand dollars, which is what our ratio is right now, it's gonna be like ninety-eight percent. So people assume that we're gonna generate revenue on that change, but we don't. We're just reallocating. All you're doing is looking at the levy, and you're dividing the levy by the valuation to come up with a tax rate. It'll lower the tax rate, but everybody, in theory, if your property changed by twelve percent across the board, you would expect the tax rate to be down twelve percent, you would pay the same amount.
There's usually a sliver of gain there.
There is, there is. And there's, and there's also a gain in, if my property is twelve percent under, under valued, this property might be fifteen percent under valued, but this one might only be ten percent under valued. And so that, it shifts, um, the tax burden, so to speak, uh, from one property to the next, so just.
If the average is ten, and yours goes up twenty, your taxes are going up. If we, if we, if we kept the tax levy the same.
Right.
You're paying more because yours went up twenty percent and yours went up ten percent.
Right. That's why I'm saying, I, I just, I'm curious about that.
Yeah.
I know, I, I'm not, I'm not willing to play the game, but I just, I, totally a curiosity question, and I will never hold your feet to the fire on that, so.
That's where Russ and I philosophically are very similar, because we don't like playing that.
And I'm not asking us to play the game, I just thinking ahead, so.
Okay.
No, that's good.
Good. Uh, did you wanna do debt, uh, levy, the, the?
You might as well, yeah, that's, that's yours too.
If you don't mind, uh, before you close out, and again, I'm, I apologize for going long, cause I went on to my tirade about local government finance. Um, I just wanna point out on page four twenty-five, and all of our, all of our outstanding debt has principal and interest like a mortgage on your house. And we're required to make principal and interest payments. The stuff that's assigned to utilities gets assigned to utilities, even if we issue general obligation debt, but we've started to issue more revenue debt. Um, I received a question, uh, about library. The library has principal and interest payments because some of our debt was issued for projects for the benefit of the library, so their budget includes a principal and interest payment as well. This is just the portion that's being repaid by property taxes, and if you look at line forty-one oh two, um, you'll note that we had eleven million four, uh, we went up to twelve million in twenty twenty. We actually decreased eleven one in twenty twenty-one, and we're back to twelve seven, uh, for twenty twenty-two. So, it looks like, you know, we have a large increase. But if you look at what we've done with our debt service payments, in twenty twenty-one, we actually had excess funds that we did not have to have levy dollars to cover those principal and interest payments, as we were evaluating the fund balance of the position of what we've done before, so we used some fund balance to pay for items that we typically would levy, so we gave ourselves a reprieve last year in twenty twenty-one, but we don't have that option in twenty twenty-two, so. Twenty twenty-two is the debt, is, is the levy we need to retire our debt. City council, every time you issue debt, you issue a resolution saying you're placing irrepealable tax to repay the debt, so you've already ma- made that commitment. It's one of the cases where a current council can obligate a future elected official body based on adopting that irrepealable tax levy to retire debt. So, there's no really wiggle room on that.
Basically, it went up a million, a million and a half, and that's bulk of the levy. Eighty percent of the levy increase is on this page. Which made it tough for us on the operating side.
I think I got my section's done, and you can.
Yeah, you deliver, yeah, yes. A little bit anticlimactic, but I'll do, I'm gonna do both the council and the manager, so I'll go back to the very first page in, in general government, the council page on page sixty-six. This reflects, uh, the council budget reflects the, uh, salaries that are approved by a prior council before a new council is seated. Um, the council this year decided not to go revisit any wage, wage changes, so the changes, uh, there's no change in your budget on the, um, on the personnel side, and we're holding the dues and everything pretty static. Uh, the dues you pay include the league of municipalities, um, uh, Chamber of Commerce, things like that, local, local groups that the city may belong to. Conferences and training are for any of the conferences you may go to, primarily league. And so, other than that, fairly static type of things. Um, happy to answer any questions, but it's your budget, so, uh, you know, ask away. Otherwise, I will go to my budget, um.
How, how much of the budget do we normally burn up? How much of the budget do we normally burn up? In previous.
Yeah, yeah, I would say, um, you know, it varies. Last year, not a lot because, um, conferences dried up. I mean, what was your, your conference budget was six hundred fifty dollars, probably something that council members went to the first two months of the year. Um, you know, I, I have always advocated for council members to, to go to the, the new council member training, to go to league conferences and things like that. That really, uh, depends on your individual schedules. Um, in the past, we've done things lobbying wise and whatnot. Generally, you, you know, we don't put a lot in there, so you generally get close to a hundred percent. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll go to mine, which is.
Oh, wait, just one second.
Go ahead.
Um, the, uh, the regular pay, that's all seven council members, right?
Correct.
Wouldn't that be just slightly less because Councilmember Miller so generously donated next year's?
It still gets donate, it still gets sent out, so.
Oh, right.
How do you deal with it, Russ?
Well, first of all, he, he waived his salaries for twenty twenty-one. Not sure what his plans are for twenty twenty-two. One can speculate, and I'd rather not speculate when we were putting our budget together.
Yep.
But you're right, Mark, it would be a shift from wages though down into other contractual services.
Okay. Um, my budget, uh, reflects.
I just wanna add it gets spent one way or the other, so.
Correct, it gets spent one way, yeah. Correct, it gets spent one way, yeah. Good way to put it. My budget is a two-person department. It's myself and Diane. So again, as Russ said earlier, all the wage increases are now incorporated into all the budgets. That's why you see an increase there. Otherwise, the items in here are pretty much what's based on my agreement and then benefits and whatnot for Diane and myself. The operating costs still reflect my contract. I think there's a slight decrease on miscellaneous other materials and supplies because we, we haven't been spending much in that area. But pretty static budget. Happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
On 6458, the conference on training, that looks like it's double the pre-COVID, or at least double, what, 2019?
Yep. I did not go to the International City County Management Association Conference that year. That's probably, that's probably the single largest expense I have.
Okay.
Diane put 7,000, and she was being optimistic. I think she was trying to get rid of me, but I didn't go to, I didn't go to the conference this year either.
There's always deer camp.
There's different, there's different ways of doing that.
Yeah, that's true. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Oh, perfect.
As far as, you know, closing out for today, first of all, I want to thank, thank you for all the time, you know, asking questions throughout the day. That's, you know, it's tempting to just get burned out and just kind of give up, especially when the air handler in the building is not working. That's why, that's why it's as sticky as it is, and it's beautiful outside. So I don't want to make you stay in here any longer than you need to. Obviously, you know, what we have in terms of, you know, where we go next, it goes back to the mayor's question that she asked a moment ago. Is a page still the fund balance, or no, the levy summary, Russ? What page is that on?
49.
49. Thank you, Paula. Oh, no, 42, 42. If you want to refer to page 42, it's the
I think that's the first time Paula's been wrong the entire time.
The first tab on budget overview. This goes back to what we were discussing yesterday. Right now, the levy that we have proposed is 43,727,700, which represents a 4.23% increase. The council had given us some general, I wouldn't even say direction, preference to 4% to 4.5%. Keep that there. So what Russ did is, in the middle of the page, it says 4.5% increase in levy. That's what it would take it to, and it shows that there's about 112,872 if you wanted to go all the way there. You heard some many compelling cases. I hope you brought your tissues, because there are a lot of great proposals that came from departments, but obviously, you can't do them all. Russ and I cut hundreds of thousands of dollars from various budgets, but we had to absorb the basics. We had to absorb the fact that commodities are going up, fuel's going up, salt's going up. We're, you know, in September, our salt sheds will be filled. They are going to be filled up before every winter. We're, when the, when it hits, when the tanks hit a minute, below the minimum, we call up transport to come in and restock our fuel. That's what we do. And we have employees, you know, the biggest save, savings we had has been not being able to fill positions. That's not necessarily a good thing. You've heard the practical realities just this morning that we're, we're taking people from water distribution. Thank goodness, there was no water main break today, because we were able to take that person off of routine maintenance and put him back on the garbage truck. And he thought when he went to water distribution, his day driving a garbage truck, we're gone.
One of your goals next year will, to have you and the department heads get their CDLs.
Yeah, well, and the council, too. It's getting close. We can pay, yeah, we can pay you up to 15,000, I believe, is the state rule. So we can put you out of truck. Don't get me wrong. In some of these small towns, that's what they do, because they have such a difficult time finding people. They, they literally swear into service their elected officials to drive plow trucks. I am not exaggerating.
Well, we've seen it across our country. Yeah, we've seen it across our country. You've got the National Guard driving school buses right now.
Yeah. So that's the cushion, assuming that's the cushion you want. Now, Russ has put up the better working model, that it's sort of live, you can, you can model whatever you want. But, you know, with, you know, these options, you know, Russ has updated some things from yesterday's discussion. For example, enhancement number seven, Chief Smith talked about adding two officers but having overtime savings. So the net result will, will get it down to about, just coincidentally, it's about $112,000. And that's, that's not intended for anything other than maybe Chief Smith did the math. But the reality is, is that if you want to cap it at 4.5, you know what you got to play with. And, you know, this is always a difficult part. I mean, we, we didn't want to get you right up to your cap and give you no discretion. So that's part, I mean, part of what we do is we want to give you some discretion, but obviously, we didn't give you a heck of a lot.
But then that contingency we were just talking about, that was for the comfort level on the self-insured piece, let's just use that as an example. There may be some other areas beyond what you're showing us here.
That's, that's an excellent observation. That's, that's true. We can shuffle things around. I think Mr. Van Gompl might get a little uncomfortable, because I think he feels we need a larger contingency based on things he did, for example, with health insurance. We took away that, that more conservative approach with the departments, and he literally went through person, vacancy by vacancy to get his number, to get that number down in the department. And he didn't add all of it to contingency, but he added some of it to contingency. Is that fair statement, Russ?
Again, I think the biggest thing is if you add, if you start adding people, it's not a one, it's not one year. It's a, it's a reoccurring thing. Just so you understand. Yeah, you're, you're right. The, these, these enhancements, numbers six through 14 are not in any particular recommended order. That's just, that's the way they came in.
So unfair question here, but I'm going to ask it anyways. If we, as a, as a body, came back to and said, you know what, we really like number seven, we really like number nine, we know that combined, that raises levy 4.8%, we need it to be 4.5%. Is there stuff you would do?
I don't know.
It was hypothetical.
It was hypothetical. No, you gave me a spreadsheet that worked. That was your big mistake.
We'd probably have to, I probably think we'd take a look at things. I, looking at, again, this is just me providing you my view as the finance director.
With 30 years' experience and a city manager as well.
And I think I'm just looking at the needs of the community. I have no particular big heartburn with you added number seven. I'd have to, I have to urge you to proceed with caution on number nine. I think there's some other cir, other circumstances, consequences if you add number nine, that might be not beneficial to the organization.
I want to remind everybody, too, the 20%, 26% increase in violent crime. We're, we're going to get real pushback on that. So it's already showing up at my doorstep in emails and phone calls.
Well, and the fact that the social worker could actually benefit both police and fire with the, you know, 6% of their calls being mental health from PD. We didn't have a percentage specifically from fire, but.
The other thing is on the social worker, I think you heard in the presentation that there might be the option as if we provided some seed money, that there might be opportunities to go back to the county and say, we're in for this program. And are you guys in?
You know, and I'm probably the most vocal, but I, I mean, I just heard the chief say he would rather have two officers than a social worker. So my, right now, my vote is, is add two officers.
Director Van Gompl, the potential organizational problems or consequences you mentioned here to elaborate if we were to approve nine?
It really goes back to the question, I think, that Deputy Mayor Mugar asked. What strategy do you employ on a staffing? The battalion chiefs are, are being taxed a great deal. So which strategy do you support to do that? I think that's really what the issue is. And the BCS, four years ago, the fire chief and the assistant chief were, I would say, inappropriately inserting themselves into the supervisory roles on shifts, which is okay on an occasional basis, but on an ongoing basis, it was a problem. But once you solve that issue by taking them out, you put more burden on the BCS, which is why there was that additional, additional funds for the BCS, because they were, we had to at least do something to recognize their contributions. The BCS are still, not all of them are on the 24-hour shifts, two of them are on 40-hour shifts. So I think that's, it's those combining factors that I think Russ is talking about.
And the one that I passed around would go into the no impact on the levy, correct? Because it's a limited term proposition?
Okay. So I just glanced at it this morning. If it's not on the levy, how would you get money for it?
So I, my question is whether or not, because it's an LTE with a defined term, or as a consultant or contracted out, would that be, which box would you place that in? And/or recommend for potentially using ARPA dollars? I don't know.
It's operational, and operational is on top.
I would, I guess, City Manager Roloff, I would ask Assistant City Manager Fitzpatrick if he wanted to elaborate on his budget a little bit, because I don't, I think we kind of skimmed over it. Within the HR budget, we do have some additional consulting services in for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think it kind of got skimmed over on his budget presentation.
How could that be? That was so dang long.
I thought it was pretty short, actually.
Short Fitz.
Yeah. So there's two things in my budget that I didn't talk about. Number one, the consulting, potential consulting costs for strategic planning that we're going to be undertaking this next year. So there's, there's those monies. And then also, I've spoken to City Manager Roloff and Finance Director Van Gompl about some of the, some of the initiatives that the DEI committee is, is working on, and also the DEI initiatives that we're working on organizationally. And I think council knows that we had a retreat, we, we trained our supervisors and directors, and we're in the process of training our employees, but we still have additional training that we need to accomplish. And as the liaison also to DEI with Michelle, I know that our DEI committee is doing a fantastic job. They're super well-intended participants, but I think they feel themselves that they could benefit from a little more structure, a little more guidance, and maybe some sort of a strategic plan in order to try to maybe organize their thoughts a little bit. So my suggestion was, knowing that we have a very difficult budget, and you're wrestling with all these, you know, great proposals, you know, maybe we could budget kind of jointly, in a, for lack of a better term, to get some additional services, some consulting services that we could utilize for training for our employees, but also that the DEI group could utilize in, in terms of creating a little bit more structure toward what they'd like to accomplish. And then both groups could benefit, because this individual would be working with both groups. We may or may not, in the future, then, consider a permanent position. It could be an outcome of a plan that we might develop, but it would be a stepping stone to moving the organization forward, and then also assisting the DEI group that has a tremendous amount of well-intended ideas. So that's really.
And it's also in the ordinance that we required, that they produce an action plan.
Yes, yes.
Didn't we, didn't we put $25,000 in the budget?
Actually.
2,500.
Oh, no.
No, I'm sorry. If you go to page 81, I think that's what Russ is.
On the screen here.
I think there's 30 for this initiative.
There's 6401 is contractual services, and that difference between the 28 and the 78, is that difference?
I thought Laurie and I put $25,000 in the budget, I think, two years ago?
We asked for that, and.
For 21, we gave money.
Yeah, for, for this last year, for the training and the retreat. I think there was like $25,000, and we utilized some of that.
Yeah, I didn't see that specifically, because it went for other things, and it didn't come back around.
And they weren't ready, I don't think.
They weren't ready.
Okay.
So we used it for the retreat and the training. So what's in there is 30,000 for this idea, this consulting idea, and then there's 20,000 in there for strategic planning. And I also believe there's money that's placed in there for the class and comp study that we talked about earlier.
No, the class and comp, actually, if I go back to the thing, it's actually recommended to come out of fund balance.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry.
The 6401 is contractual services, because it wouldn't be an employee. It would be a contracted service that would come in and assist with that.
Right. Okay.
So we've got, at the moment, in front of us, we've got 30,000 in the, in the budget for a contracted service to assist city, city staff.
Yes.
With DEI implementation or?
Training.
Training, okay. As well as that that could double dip for the DEI committee itself.
Right, right. It would be a resource, I think, for both groups. That would be the plan.
So that would include that facilitation that, and that, that's actually going on their agenda. So if that comes up before their meeting, oh, did Aaron, oh, no, he didn't make it back. I guess sharing that with them, you know, more specifically that that is a potential source, and the unused.
Right. I didn't want to get too far ahead of council on that. You know, I, I thought that, you know, we might have an opportunity to talk about it now. I believe Michelle might have shared it with the chair, Ashley, so he's aware of it, but I just didn't think it was appropriate for me to go too far without seeing what your thoughts were on it.
I think what is in the budget presented to us from, from HR is, is a good step in the right direction.
And I'm sorry, John, could you just repeat where that is on 80?
Page 81?
81.
6401 contractual.
I think it's in contractual services.
We've increased it by $50,000.
Okay.
Anybody else? I mean, everybody knows where I'm at. I'm at two cups.
Now's our first chance, and then Tuesday night's another one, but.
That's what I was getting at, obviously. I think two cups is a no-brainer.
Courtney?
Yeah, I agree.
I'd like to suggest one officer, the social worker, and the arborist. I know that puts us a bit over, but given, wait a minute, was the arborist in?
That's number 13.
That's 13, right? Given what we're challenged with, that Bill and Ray presented, and what they're looking at, you know, trying to accomplish, like folks to at least consider that, I don't know if they have the ability to somehow. I don't know if they have the ability to somehow make that happen without another arborist, but it sounded pretty significant, um-
Madam Mayor, if I may just provide an observation, um, for, for your consideration. I thought about, um, making that a bigger part of the budget request. However, one thing I thought, and I think maybe you might want to think about before you do that, is I'd like to see once how the contracted service that we just entered into at the last council meeting works out. Where we're contracting out for services to help with the remediation of the emerald ashmore trees.
Okay.
And I would just ask maybe some patience, and see once how that program works out, before you make a commitment for the person. Um, I, I think they're all worthwhile requests. I'm just giving you my observation of, of maybe something to think about before committing, uh, to that position.
I agree with that. That, that was my assessment of that, that particular one coming in, especially after we approved a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-ish, this last meeting, but, uh, but that also, Parks is understaffed, in general, whether it's arborist or, or-
Yep, and I would, I would just add to that, I, I think there's, there may be more, um, contracting that needs to be done for emerald ashmore, too. I think that that amount, that hundred thousand, is a good start, but, you know, my understanding is it's a very serious problem, and that might not be the end of it, certainly, so-
Courtney, I cut you off, I'm sorry.
You're good. Um, I, I like the two police officers, that's for sure. Um, I would like to see seven, would we be able to do seven and eleven together? Take up the fire department something? Otherwise, I'm full for, fully for Parks, if that's not-
I was looking at the seven-eleven, it looks like it'd be four point six percent increase if we did that.
I think there's, with number eleven, I think there's some things we don't know that we need to know.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree a lot with that. I think there's, there's just too much-
Unknown.
Unknown there. That, that's my opinion, so-
But then I also agree with the Parks, is they're so understaffed, and it, they do such a great job with what they have, and they, they need more.
I'm hopeful that Parks Director Maurer can, can, uh, come back with something creative, maybe for number twelve.
I think in the past, didn't we give him like half a position or something, and, and-
I think that was like a Parks technician, maybe, or-
Something, something like that.
I think, um, Parks Director Maurer indicated that he didn't think that this needed to be, uh, filled for an entire year.
Right.
At least starting out, if you saw fit to fill it.
Russ, your thoughts on that, two cops and half a, half a rate?
Um, I'd like, I already gave you my comments on the number seven, because I think that, uh, that's something that serves the community well, um-
Does it give you time to come up with some money on, on a half a position?
Yeah, it obviously does.
We can always, I mean, we, we can sit down and try to hammer out some different options to get it done.
At least that way, though, they're know, they know that help is on the way, it just might not be immediately, you know?
But your comfort level is still, what I'm, I'm still hearing, whenever I hear the different ideas being bounced around, I keep hearing the four and a half percent ceiling is still a pretty solid ceiling that you want to see. Whether we, uh, figure out implementing them, a delayed implementation, uh, consider, uh, some part of contingency, like, you know, but not too much, you know? I think we got something to work with.
And I think if you can come back to us, what, what looks like four or five? Is it four, five, three? Is it four, six, one? Is it, does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, you had asked about what a penny does, and it's point zero-nine percent.
Exactly.
So, just give you a rough idea.
It's thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen bucks.
Yeah.
To add that one, twelve is about three cents. I, after you'd asked the question yesterday, I, I thought about, it's about three cents, so it'd equal four cents.
And then maybe we can hold the chief's feet to the fire on some of that overtime, too, so-
I'm on board with, you've got three, I'm on board with adding two to the PD, uh, so number seven.
So, can I help, just before you guys decide that, can I just ask? Didn't he say that adding two officers, that, that one of those is actually just a replacement for the behavioral health officer that was reassigned, which was desperately needed? But, so, I'm not understanding why we have to add two if that position is still there. Obviously, it's, it's removing it from the general pool with those specifics, but it's kind of re, so, so help me understand that.
Okay, uh, let me, let me, let me try. Um, and, you know, through the budget process, you give us authorization for X amount of people, whether it's police officers, firefighters, Parks workers, whatever. And if one of those positions get, gets reassigned, or, um, from an operational standpoint, that's really the city manager's call on, you know, the jo-, actual job title. It might, and what he did was, he just, he kept with his authorized personnel, but he assigned a responsibility and took one officer out the street and put him in as a behavioral health officer, or whatever it's called.
Yeah, it's still same, it's still a police officer.
So, in order to, in order to come back and get another police officer on the street, we have to add one more person to our org chart. So, it's that plus one more. I don't know if that made sense or not.
It's not really taking him off the street, it's just kind of shifting which of the call.
They're talking about a daily patrol acti-, uh, scheduling.
Yeah, I, I think you'd have to ask the chief. Now, with everything being discussed here earlier, both the mayor and deputy mayor asked me to put on next week's agenda, discussion of enhancement. So, maybe you want to literally and figuratively cool off, and just kind of reflect on everything, uh, because, you know, we still have, you know, a work session and a budget hearing on November third, and I'm gonna put that on the agenda as well.
And we have a council member who's not here.
And, yeah, so, you know, there's, there's opportunities, but, I mean, this is a great discussion. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm seeing where you're, where you're leaning towards, but there's not unanimity. There's, there appears to be some consensus, though, but with the absence of one council member, you know, we could, we could do that next Tuesday. We can give you a rough idea of how we would approach some of the things you've asked us. It's like, well, what if we want a little more than a hundred twelve on this sheet, but we don't want to go above four and a half?
Right.
And just how are we gonna play that card for you?
So, I think, I think what we can do is take this and just rearrange it, and kind of put number, uh, seven at the top, and maybe what might be options underneath that, and then have you guys discuss that.
Yep.
Yeah, freeze that one in place, because that seems to be the one that's risen to the top. Um, yeah, because I know the other department heads would be more than happy to, to continue making their pitches.
Yeah.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you two want a chance to speak to that, or wait?
Me? I already spoke.
I'll say, I'm, I'm still, I'm very supportive of the social worker, if we can figure out how to make that happen. I'm still thinking about two officers, not sure.
But the chief said he would prefer two officers over the social worker, and I think he would know his department better than I do, so-
But I, but I think to the point that Councilmember Erickson raises, and Mr. Van Gomple raised, that there might be another approach to that one, uh, that, that the chief mentioned, so, uh, let us see what we can do about that as well. Because I'm hearing a couple of places, I mean, the behavioral health officer is really, you know, to address those issues, but do we need a social worker in that context? Can we figure that out? And so, I don't know who's watching today, but my phone's been blown up in the last hour.
It's the true department heads.
And, no, not just department heads, I had, I had some county people, too, so, I'm like, okay, this mouse is going on, so-
Wait, what did we throw the county under the bus for when I was gone?
I, I'm, I'm really pleased with-
Maybe they want to pay for that social worker position.
Our viewership is, must be picking up here.
If there is a way to partner the county-
And we could get better expertise.
On that particular one, on the social worker. If there's a way to partner with them, I'm in favor of spending money to get money. Uh, I always am, so, we, we do that numerous different things, where we've got to invest to, to get some additional return. But if there's a way to, to form a partnership with the county, where they, they've got more expertise in that area, uh, I'm also, I'm interested.
Me as well. And then it, it helps with doubling up, having, I mean, I'm, I mean, I hope that they're working on the cases that are already being brought to the OP, the, maybe joint effort.
I mean, we have worked-
So many of the officers-
Really new person, yeah.
So many of the officers are already operating many of their hours and, and stretching in overtime, from what I understand, based on having to do social work duties, I mean, and the benefit to the fire department if they've got the same, you know?
So, bring in county to work with those two departments.
It's not un, it's not unheard of for us to have positions that work cooperatively with the county. Um, we've had positions in the past in PD that have worked with the DA's office. So, uh, those sorts of arrangements have been structured in the past, so I, I think that the potential exists there.
Fluidity.
That one's just gonna be a tricky one in terms of us committing, just not knowing-
Because we don't know what-
Not knowing what the county mayor may not-
Right.
May not do, but-
Brief feedback, I really appreciate that, you know, this, I know we would love to go out and enjoy the day, but you gave us a half hour of extra, that really good discussion. Thank you so much.
Thank everybody for taking the two days off.
And I have a cheat to play with, it sounds like. Thank you so much. We will put this on next week's agenda, so that you can, you know, as you reflect on it. Thank you so much.